I know we're getting trained.
Test. Good evening. Good evening. It is seven o'clock on May 22nd, 2023. PCT, are we on? Very good. And we're getting started right on time, and I am delighted by this. Welcome, everybody, to the May 22nd, 2023 Regular City Council Meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bowles, present.
Councilmember Beer, here.
Councilmember Beckmeyer, present. Mayor Protam Vatarlos, here. Mayor Big Stick, present.
A friendly reminder to anyone parked outside in the parking lot, please grab a parking pass downstairs at the base of the stairs on the door if you haven't done so already. We want to make sure nobody gets ticketed, and they monitor for parking passes in this parking lot here. So if you haven't put one on the front of your dash, just right at the bottom of the stairs, grab one off the door. And with that, the City of Pacifica acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Ramehtuush Aloni peoples, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We honor the Ramehtuush Aloni peoples for their enduring commitment to Mother Earth. As the indigenous protectors of this land and in accordance with their traditions, the Ramehtuush Aloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. We affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples and wish to pay our respects to the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramehtuush Aloni peoples. Can we please have a salute to the flag led by Mayor Protam?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk Coffey, are there any meeting notes that you want to read?
Tonight's meeting will be held in person as well as on Zoom. The Zoom link is provided in the agenda. Also, there's a dial-in option. The dial-in option is also provided in the agenda. You can dial into 1-669-900-6833 and then enter webinar ID 811-5615-8241. For those dialing in, to raise your hand, press star nine and star six to unmute once called upon by the last four digits of your phone number.
Thank you very much. City Attorney, do we have a closed session report?
No reportable action.
In that case, that brings us to special presentations. We will begin with one for Public Works Week. National Public Works Week, whereas the City of Pacifica employs over 60 public works professionals such as parks, streets, and building maintenance workers, wastewater collections, and plant operators, lab technicians, rangers, engineers, managers, and administrative staff. And whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, emergency management, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Pacifica. And whereas the City of Pacifica held an open house for National Public Works Week on May 17th, 2023, and National Public Works Week will be celebrated from May 21st to the 27th, 2023, throughout the United States to acknowledge accomplishments and milestones while raising awareness to the contributions Public Works has had on our community and our everyday lives. And whereas the American Public Works Association, APWA, has announced the theme for the 2023 National Public Works Week as Connecting the World Through Public Works. And whereas the Connecting the World theme highlights how Public Works connects us all through infrastructure and service, enhancing the quality of life for the communities that these professionals serve. And whereas Public Works employees help keep communities strong by providing critical services in traffic and transportation, stormwater, wastewater collection and treatment, public facilities, parks and beaches, emergency management, and first response, engineering, and right-of-way management. Now, therefore, I, Tiger Jazzy Twirls Big Stick, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Pacifica and all its citizens, do hereby designate the week of May 21st through May 27th, 2023, as National Public Works Week, and recognize our public works professionals and the substantial contributions they make to protecting our health, safety, and quality of life done this 22nd day of May, 2023.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. And just really quickly, Lisa Peterson, Director of Public Works, and with me here tonight is also Louis Sun, our Plant Manager, and also Roland Yip, who's our Deputy Director of Public Works City Engineer. Thank you very much. And thanks to all of our Public Works employees who work day and night for us to keep us safe. Thank you.
Thank you, and council members. Council members, would anyone like to make a comment?
We wouldn't be a city without Public Works. We need them all the time. A special thanks for all of the work that you did when we went through the storms. I mean, that took everyone so much time, so much energy and effort, and we applaud you definitely. Thank you.
I will add my thank yous so very, very much. And I think it did make it to the open house, but I love to see that all those students and young people showed up to learn about Public Works because, you know, there's a profession there, and we need good work or so. Thank you.
I'll just add, thank you for all that you do for us and keep us safe and respond in emergencies and take care of business day in, day out. And I know that it's unsung a lot of times, but really, we do appreciate you.
And just to add, beyond the day maintenance, you really keep track of our infrastructure that is aging. You know, it's a city that was mostly developed in the 50s, and there's a lot of work to keep it running, but also to plan ahead for the future and its needs. And I just really appreciate all of your technical help and all of the long hours that I know you all put in. It doesn't go unnoticed. Thank you.
There's not nearly enough I could say about Public Works, and I have said it many times before and will continue to, that it's very easy to remember firefighters and police officers as our heroes. And it would seem a shame that it would take storms, the magnitude of which we had to experience this winter, to garner proper public recognition of Public Works. Because frankly, yours is a team in our community whom are working most effectively when not noticed whatsoever. And it's a testament to how good a job you're doing that we don't seem to need to call you. So every opportunity I get to have to highlight the amazing work Public Works does is a treat for me. And I'm going to start rambling soon, but thank you a thousand times over. That brings us to a proclamation regarding Pride Month, June of 2023. Whereas the City Council of the City of Pacifica recognizes and proclaims the month of June 2023 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ+, or Pride Month throughout the City of Pacifica. And whereas the City of Pacifica joins the County of San Mateo in observing Pride Month to honor the history of the LGBTQ+ movement and support the rights of all citizens to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. And whereas LGBTQ+ individuals have had a measurable impact on the cultural, civic, and economic success of our country. And whereas the City of Pacifica is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equality for LGBTQ+ people in our diverse community, and acknowledges that the need for education and awareness remains vital to undiscrimination and prejudice. And whereas the City of Pacifica raises the progress flag to commemorate June 2023 as Pride Month, the flag raised was designed in 2018 by graphic designer Daniel Kazar, adding a five-colored chevron to the classic rainbow flag, which is widely recognized as the LGBTQ+ community, to include black and brown stripes to represent marginalized LGBTQ+ communities of color, along with the colors pink, light blue, and white used on the transgender pride flag. And whereas the City of Pacifica collaborated with Coast Pride and local business owners to kick off Pride Month with its Second Annual Pride Parade on June 3rd, 2023, at 11:00. Whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for San Mateo County's LGBTQ+ community, and is an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights. Now, therefore, I, Tiger Jazzy Twirls Big Stick, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Pacifica and all its citizens, do hereby proclaim June 2023 as Pride Month in the City of Pacifica in support of the LGBTQ+ community, and recognize all LGBTQ+ residents whose influential and lasting contributions to our neighborhoods make the City of Pacifica a vibrant community in which to live, work, and visit, done this 22nd day of May, 2023.
May I say something?
Please do.
So we're so excited about our Second Annual Pride Parade. It's going to be a real parade, closing down Palmetto only for a little bit of time, and we're going to have a real parade, and then we're going to have a family festival at IBL afterwards, so 11:00 on June 3rd on Palmetto. And even if you don't like sign up for the parade, you can fill in at the end, so come and join us. It's going to be so fun. It's an honor to work with Coast Pride. If you don't know about them or their services, please look them up. They're a wonderful organization, and we're lucky to have them.
I know we have many proclamations, so I appreciate the short comments. I'll just throw in how important I believe Pride Month to be. Not merely giving that extra added opportunity for our community to come out and express the ability to be themselves, but also, though cis male myself, I am throughout life inspired by the community to be able to properly take personal responsibility for who I wish to be when, in some instances, it is counterintuitive due to the pressures of conforming. So thank you to our community for this opportunity to be reminded to be oneself, so long as it harms no one to the greatest extent that one feels to be themself. Does anyone from the community want to chime in on either of the two proclamations that were just read? I want to give an opportunity. Okay, seeing none, we're going to bring it to a proclamation for Chris Porter Gabrielli. Whereas, Chris Porter Gabrielli is retiring from a distinguished public safety career, serving as General Manager of Coastside Scavenger from 1984 and Recology of the Coast from 2010, totaling nearly 40 years of service. And whereas, Chris Porter Gabrielli has overseen all aspects of Recology of the Coast, including its transition from sole ownership to corporation, and committed herself to protecting the environment and guaranteeing transparency to the customers. And whereas, Chris Porter Gabrielli has led her team from the forefront, working alongside employees on the field to address essential needs throughout the COVID-19 pandemic and provide regular services in unprecedented times. And whereas, Chris Porter Gabrielli has brought numerous recycling and composting programs to the City of Pacifica, such as the Three Stream Cart Rollout for Garbage, Recycling and Organics following the acquisition of Coastside Scavenger, alongside the implementation of SB 1383, Reducing Organic Waste Disposal, within commercial businesses. And whereas, Chris Porter Gabrielli has taken pride in the many years of collaboration with organized labor in her work with the Reserve Officer Training Corps, ROTC workforce, in addition to her years of collaboration with the community as an active member of the Board of Directors for the Pacifica Resource Center. And whereas, Chris Porter Gabrielli has shown the utmost care for not only the environment, but also for the employees at Recology of the Coast. And whereas, Chris Porter Gabrielli has embodied dedication, resiliency, and leadership throughout her career, and become a champion for the environment in the City of Pacifica. Now, therefore, I, Tiger Jazzy Twirls Big Stick, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Pacifica and all its citizens, do hereby pay tribute to Chris Porter Gabrielli, and wish her happiness and success in her future endeavors, done this 22nd day of May, 2023. And by the way, before you get started, because I'm sure you have comments to make, I wanted to make sure you knew that our state senator, Josh Becker, has also sent along a certificate of appreciation. So you are recognized far and wide.
I was checking to see if I was dead, because I never heard so many nice things said about me. I mean, you know, I'm usually here talking about the rate application and having disparaging remarks made. Thank you so much. That was, you know, very, brought a tear to my eye. I did bring the Kleenex. And just want to thank, first of all, thank Kevin and Lisa, who have worked really hard with me to make all the programs successful. It's been a very joint effort on everything. I think Recology taking over the street cans and the abandoned waste has really helped the city. Want to thank, of course, all the council for working with me, and if I had a problem, always, you know, being there to assist me, and as I hope I have done with you. I kind of want to reach out to two people who have been very helpful to me within the city structure along these 40 years. One is Steve Rhodes, who really worked hard when we first started with Recology to implement all the new programs, great city manager. Also Lorenzo Heinz, who was someone that I worked a lot with over the years. And we had a great collaboration. We're able to get a lot of good things accomplished. And I want to thank my bosses are here tonight, Carl Menney and Evan Boyd. And the new General Manager of Recology is Glenn Banji, and I have introduced him to most of you, and he's going to do a great job. But I will be a helper for a while. I'll be helping on different things, working with Lisa, mostly on 1383, so I'll still be around, but not day-to-day. So I thank you. I feel very honored.
I have a light from Sue Beckmeyer.
You're probably going to have a light from everybody, but I just got my button pushed first. Chris, thank you so much for helping me. As I joined the council, you were one of the very first people to reach out to me and help me get acclimated. It was such a benefit to me because you've worked with so many council members over the years. You knew my job better than I knew my job. And so the things that you were able to give me insight into, help me, you know, it was like, you're trying to learn as fast as you can, and it just really made it smooth for me. Always available when I would call, always supporting the city, all of our programs, and we're really grateful to you and to the organization that you've built. And I personally, my hat is off to you as a woman in your field. You are truly, you know, in a very small class, and I am so proud of you and proud of, in your field, in solid waste. That is not, you know, I'm sure the gentlemen that are sitting on either side of you would agree. We don't see a lot of very strong and accomplished women yet in your field, but you're absolutely a maverick, and thank you for all that you've done for us.
Mayor Protam.
I don't even know how to tell you how special you are. I tell this story over and over, but I called one day because someone had dumped mattresses. I was still on the phone with Chris talking about it, and in my rearview mirror, I see Recology picking up the mattresses. I mean, that's how amazing it is, that they were right there, and they did it, and it was done. And everything that you've done for the city has made it so much better. The picking up of the garbage on the streets, the increase in the cans, and just what you do for the public in general is just amazing. And you're a really special person, and I'm not saying goodbye. So, see ya.
Councilmember Beer.
Oh, okay, great. Chris, so you taught me a lot as well, and you made it so easy for us to just come and talk to you. And you're like, just come and talk to me. You know where I am. Just open the door and come and talk to me. I want to thank you for so many things. I want to thank you for all of the work that you did during the pandemic. I don't know anybody who worked harder than Recology during the pandemic, and you never missed a day. As the garbage cans filled up and filled up, you expanded the services. You kept, sorry, I feel emotional. You kept our city healthy because of Recology. So thank you so much for that. I want to thank you to how generous you are to all of the different groups in our community. I don't think, I don't think the community knows that, of how much money you've given and time you've given, and, you know, just all the things that you've done for us and for me. And so I'm going to miss you, and I thank you so much.
And I haven't gotten to know you as well yet, and I'm sad. Well, you're going to be around, though, I hear. So I still have my chance, and I appreciate you introducing us to your new General Manager also, and knowing that we're in good hands. Again, we wouldn't survive as a city very long without your amazing services week to week, so grateful for the whole team. And just one little observation, because I like to be on social media to kind of keep a pulse for the community and try to address some disinformation sometime. And I appreciate how much you have been on social media and Nextdoor and answering people's questions and really trying to educate people about the services and the different things that you do that are good for the city, but also good for the environment. So thank you, and happy retirement.
Going to give away one of the personal secrets, that one of her self-appointed nicknames in conversation is often Queen of Trash. Chris Porter Gabrielli, Queen of Trash, no longer. You know, I work at the grocery store, and on occasion, one of my customer owners will be like, I have this issue with the garbage service one way or the other. And I'll be like, Chris, what do you think? And she'll be like, give them my cell phone number. That's the quality of service to our community. That's the legacy being left, and a lesson to those whom come after. I honestly can't remember at what point in time our friendship properly started. It feels like over time, conversations naturally arose, and you had a genuine interest, as I was wont to speak on occasion, and I always took a genuine interest because you're speaking to me. And friendship just seemed naturally to entune itself, and so I can't specifically think of a moment this is when I can remember being come friends with you. It just was so organic. I do remember being on the Board of PRC, and I had the pleasure of coming and asking, hey, can Recology pitch in something to help those most in need in our community? And immediately, you would open up the checkbook and say, how much do you need? And now you are on the Board of PRC. So between the level of friendship that I think anyone who takes any time getting to know you gets to immediately experience, and anybody who's paying any attention gets to witness exactly how much you have done for our community, again, I'm in a position where I cannot adequately say the words thank you, except for to use that inadequate phrase, and a thousand times over to say thank you. I have one card from one Mr. M. O'Neill. If anyone else would like to speak, you're welcome to. And Emily, if there's anyone on the line.
Good evening, council, and good evening, Chris Porter. I'm here representing Ray Mueller, the supervisor. He took and wanted to make it, but there were some family matters he had to take care of. So I don't know if you want me to read the resolution or just kind of make, I see a big, go for it? Okay. All right. Resolution from the Board of Supervisors, County of San Mateo, State of California. Resolution honoring and congratulating Chris Crescio Gabrielli upon the occasion of her retirement from Coastside Scavenger. Whereas, Chris Gabrielli is retiring from a distinguished public safety career, serving as General Manager of Coastside Scavenger from '84 and Recology of the Coast from 2010, totaling nearly 40 years of service. And whereas, Chris Gabrielli has overseen all aspects of the Recology of the Coast, including its transition from sole ownership to corporation, and committed herself to protecting the environment and guaranteeing transparency to the customers. And whereas, Chris Gabrielli has led her team from the forefront, working alongside employees on the field to address essential needs throughout the COVID-19 pandemic and provide regular services in unprecedented times. And whereas, Chris Gabrielli has brought numerous recycling and composting programs to the City of Pacifica, such as the Street Three Stream Cart Rollout for Garbage, Recycling and Organics, following the acquisition of Coastside Scavenger alongside the implementation of SB 1383, Reducing Organic Waste Disposal within commercial businesses. And whereas, Chris Gabrielli has taken pride in the many years of collaboration with organized labor in her work with the Reserve Officer Training Corps, ROTC workforce, in addition to her years of collaboration with the community as an active member of the Board of Directors for the Pacifica Resource Center. And whereas, I'm okay, yeah, okay. And whereas, Chris Gabrielli has shown the utmost care for not only the environment, but also for the employees at Recology of the Coast. And whereas, Chris Gabrielli has embodied dedication, resiliency, and leadership throughout her career, and become a champion for the environment in the City of Pacifica. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of San Mateo County hereby congratulates Chris Crescio Gabrielli upon the occasion of her retirement, and extends its best wishes for the future. And that's signed by all the five supervisors. So, Chris, I don't know, you want to come up and get it? Do you want me to? Now, can I have my three minutes? Okay. Chris, I mean, what can you say? I mean, I'd call up Chris to ask her for something, and then we'd be on the phone for a half hour talking life and everything there is to talk about Pacifica. But the thing I think I'm most proud of with Chris and Recology is that they are a union shop, and they provide living wages for their employees here in Pacifica. And the majority, it used to be the majority, and I don't know if it still is, we're still local Pacificans. So when you pay your bill to Recology- So when you pay your bill to Recology, you're recirculating that money in your community because of them. The donations, as was mentioned by Mary for the Beach Coalition, I know the Boys and Girls Club, and then sometimes there'd be a cash donation. And what's I found interesting is I know a garbage guy up in San Francisco, we actually can recycle more options here than they can up there. Like we can do the waxed milk cartons in the green bin, they cannot up there. So she has actually been able to facilitate us to be more green than San Francisco. And I think, and as the former city council, I got to say, you have really helped the city in terms of the street cans, beach cleanup, dumpsters, July, many July Fours and everything else. You have done it all. And I got to say, this is a woman whose organization touches more lives in Pacifica than police, fire, park and rec, the school district or anybody else, because they visit every week, right? Okay. So I just wanted to say thank you, Chris. Enjoy your retirement and have a good time. Take care. And I'm so happy you got rid of those baskets that I remember when I first got the bins. The old timers would remember those bins, so thank you.
Would anyone else from the community like to speak? Ah, we have a taker. If you could fill one out afterward, yeah, please do.
Hi, Chris. I've known Chris for probably the 40 years that, yes, okay.
You were on council when I started.
Her, her secret nickname for me is what? The Lobster.
The Lobster.
I, I, I just, I could not resist the opportunity to say on your retirement, Chris, that they haven't been picking up my gray waste can regularly. And could you do something about that? That's all.
Any other public comment? Oh.
Good evening, council members. Uh, my name's Carl Mini, I'm vice president of Recology for our South Region. In your career, you have a couple of really special relationships that you develop and, and for me, Chris is one of those special relationships. And I, I think all of us have been there in, in seeing her as a collaborator and definitely a challenger, uh, somebody that'll, you know, question where I'm headed on something and, and ask good questions in the right way. Chris is really a role model for all of Recology's general managers. As you can see tonight, she's found a way to effectively engage and, and really improve her community. So I really do commend you, Chris. I thank you for everything. Thanks.
And I think we would all like to take a picture with you, uh, before we're through with this item. I apologize, I should have double-checked. Emily, who do we have on the line?
Uh, we have two raised hands. The first is the caller ending in seven nine three zero.
Seven nine three zero, uh, go ahead. Was it a?
Star six to unmute.
Thank you. Star six to unmute, state your name for the record and I will tell you when you have one minute remaining of the three. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, my name is Marge Davis, I'm from Lindemar. And, um, I have had the pleasure of getting to know Chris by being on the PRC board with her and I look forward to continuing that, Chris. Thank goodness that's not included in the retirement plan, at least it better not be. Anyway, um, in addition to everything that's been said about Chris, I just wanted to say that, um, she has a, just a delightful spirit. She has a heart of gold and she has been abundantly generous to this community in so many ways. And I want to second what Mary and then also Mike said about Chris's generosity to the community and the myriad of community groups that she has helped, um, in various ways over the years. So Chris, thank you so much for serving on the board of PRC with me. Thanks for letting me get to know you. Happy retirement, you deserve it so much and let's do lunch. Thank you.
Emily?
The second raised hand is Lorenzo Heinz Jr.
Lorenzo, please state your name for the record and I'll let you know when you have a minute left.
Lorenzo Heinz Jr.
Go ahead.
All righty, thank you. Mayor Big Stick, members of the Pacifica City Council, it has been a while, my friends. Um, I just wanted to call in and congratulate Chris on her retirement. Um, it was indeed a pleasure working with her while I was there in Pacifica. Um, we did some incredible work there and I'm, I'm immensely proud of that. Uh, Chris, you know, I miss you. I know I've been gone almost three years now, but I still miss you and I appreciate all of the tutelage and all of the lessons learned. Um, anytime somebody mentions 1383 over here, I don't think of my local, uh, waste management company, I think of you first. So, um, that's the impact you've had on me. Um, I appreciate everything. Thank you for making me a better city manager and, um, you have a great retirement. And Mayor Big Stick, that is, that concludes my comments.
Thank you, city manager Heinz.
There are no other raised hands.
One final call for anyone from the audience who wishes to speak. If not, that concludes this item, closing public comment. Thank you so much, Chris. And we will go on to our next proclamation, uh, for Carolyn Yarmio. I had a special request, actually had several special requests, but, um, I, uh, made the executive decision that the winner is, uh, councilmember Beer, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Hi, Carolyn. A proclamation of the City of Pacifica in recognition of Carolyn Hare Mio. Whereas Carolyn Hare Mio has demonstrated a keen intellect and commitment to social justice in her 35 years residing in the City of Pacifica and in her activism with local organizations and the Pacifica Peace People. And whereas Carolyn has utilized her teaching background to educate citizens on civic discourse, governmental policies and social activism. And whereas Carolyn has advocated for peace and social justice in the City of Pacifica, speaking on issues such as the city's status as a compassionate city, diversity, homelessness and policies for equitable and fair practices for all. And whereas Carolyn has showcased her activism through organizing annual peace ads for the Pacifica Tribune, participating in Terranova High School Career Days, promoting peace projects in school curriculum at Ingrid B. Lacy Middle School and both Pacifica Public High Schools, planting peace poles throughout the city and more recently creating Pacifica Talks Race events. And whereas Carolyn has additionally extended her support outside of the city, organizing annual trips for over 15 years to deliver much-needed supplies to the migrants from Mexico and Central America countries seeking a better life. And where, and well, as raising thousands of dollars to aid farmer-worker-led efforts in improving their living and working conditions. And whereas Carolyn has shared a lifetime of experience and wisdom with the community, illustrating strength, conviction and humility throughout her work. And I added one of my own. And whereas, ever since I had the pleasure of meeting Carolyn, she's been changing the hearts and minds of Pacifica people, promoting peace and justice in every meeting she attended, every conversation she's engaged in, from twinkly lights on the beach for Peace Week to caring for our houseless neighbors. You've made Pacifica a better place. I love you, I will miss you and I thank you for being in my life. Now therefore I.
Tiger jazz, froze Big Stick.
On behalf of the city council, the City of Pacifica and all of its citizens do hereby extend our grateful thanks and appreciation to Carolyn Hare Mio for her many years of public service and wish her happiness and success in her future endeavors.
I appreciate those kind words and, um, it's been a real joy to be able to live here in Pacifica and work with so many wonderful people and I appreciate the work that you've done for the city. Um, maybe I haven't always come across that way sometimes, but, um, I really do appreciate the hard work that you've put in. And I, uh, want to just make sure that you understand that any, any little good actions that I may have been a part of, that's just that, I was part of a team, part of the Pacifica Housing for All, part of Pacifica Social Justice and of course, the Peace People. So thank you very much for this recognition. I accept it, um, all that, for all these groups that work so hard for the city. Thank you.
I believe that's Mayor Protem.
I remember when we were trying to work on the people with no homes and I called people, we hadn't gotten the ordinance together and I called people and asked them if they thought that, um, they would allow a motorhome to be parked in their driveway. And all the people I called said, no, except you. And you said, of course, I would allow someone to park in my driveway. Um, and I still just hold that because it was so special. Your driveway's steep, but it didn't matter and, um, I really appreciate that you said yes, because you put your soul into the matter and, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Bowles.
Um, I've had the pleasure of getting to know Carolyn well, um, the last few years and, um, especially the year before this, um, uh, as I was running for council and Carolyn was a, a key member of my campaign team and not just helping with the campaign, but really mentoring and inspiring me and kind of, um, showing me a, a path forward to, to make a difference in the city. I know all that you do comes, um, deep from within you, from, from a life of faith and knowing that, um, you, you have a place on this earth and you will use whatever is at your, at your mercy and, and discretion and talents and whoever else you can rope in to bring about, um, um, justice and mercy and, you know, care for, for the least of these, which, which is what we are called to do. Um, now I'm getting teary too. Um, we, we will miss you greatly as you head back to your homeland in Kentucky, um, but know that you have, um, friends and, and a life there also. Um, and, and I want you to know that, that your legacy lives on here and, um, and I and others will, will continue your good work. Thank you.
I can't even see Carol.
Hi, Carol. There you are.
I just want to acknowledge, uh, how much you have brought to us, to the council, um, your consistency and your, uh, sharing your message, bringing it forward and the respect that you have earned in the community. It's obvious from the folks that have turned out for you tonight, how much they love and appreciate you and all of the council is grateful to you for all that you've done. Enjoy your retirement. Great to, great to have you part of our community. Thank you.
I'm going to take the unusual step of allowing Mary to have the final word after I speak next.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, no, I just wanted to say that.
No, no, Mary, Mary.
Oh.
Me.
Oh, I just want to say one little thing, you get last.
You're, you're going to get last. You're going to get last. You read the proclamation, the responsibility falls upon. Um, and, uh, I, I don't think I've collaborated with you directly, but I've worked alongside what you've tried to accomplish so many times that I am very grateful I get to do anything to recognize the impact you've had on this community. That story that Mayor Protem told a moment ago, that's everything. That's where it goes from, you're an advocate whom sometimes I agree with, sometimes I don't agree with, I respect you on whatever level to, oh, you're the one who will actually have someone living in your driveway. As someone who has actually had someone living in my driveway, that's how I earn respect is, or by somebody who's willing to do that kind of work. You know, there's a moment in which it was, well, she's an advocate and sometimes that means that it, it kind of creates the situation in this room of sides. And what does that mean if we honor somebody in this way who maybe is an advocate for a side, does that mean someone else? And I thought, you know, we just spend a lot of time doing the strategic planning process in which we come up with the value statement for the City of Pacifica. And I thought long and hard about it and I thought, well, if you don't represent heartfelt service, which is one of our values here in Pacifica, amongst others that frankly, I think you represent also, but if you don't represent heartfelt service, then by God, I don't know who we should be honoring in this city. So thank you so much for inspiring a good conversation and for inspiring anybody who wishes to, um, try their hand at doing not just good work, but the difficult task of good work. Safe journey to you and may you be enjoying all of your days.
All I wanted to say was that Robbie and I would love to take you to dinner again if we can catch you before you leave. That's, that's all.
You don't want to like beef it up a little bit? Okay. Well, I have a card from Suzanne Moore and if anyone else would like to speak, uh, you're welcome to do so. You can fill out a card or just come on up. And, uh, Emily, if you'll check those lines.
Suzanne Moore, mix the communication skills and empathy of a teacher with the determination and sense of social justice of an advocate, add a bit of Midwest pragmatism and some southern social grace and then top it all with a unique sense of humor. And you may be describing Carolyn Hare Mio. Every community needs a Carolyn, someone to remind us of what is truly important and then start us down the path to get there. Carolyn is not timid. She doesn't hesitate. She's clearly focused, following some accurate internal pole star. Mitch McConnell has no idea what's coming his way. And Pacifica is losing a shooting star. I and many others will miss Carolyn and I wish her well as she returns home.
Anyone from the audience wishing to speak? Emily?
There are no raised hands.
Then I will close public comment and Carolyn, if you would honor us with a photograph, we'd be obliged. we'd be obliged. Okey-dokey. This brings us to the consent calendar. Would any council members like to pull an item?
Yes, I'd like to pull item six, please.
Would any other council members like to pull an item? Okay. Public comments on items one through five. If any member of the public would like to comment on items one through five. Seeing no one, having no cards. Emily?
We have two raised hands. Did you want to go over the options first?
Yeah, that would be great. I'm sorry. Say that again?
Do you want to go over the call in options? It's okay. The first raised hand is the number ending in 9309.
And I don't have the instructions immediately in front of me. That's why I have a... That's okay. What was the number on that call?
9309.
9309. Please state your name for the record, and I'll let you know when you have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is Clifford Lawrence from West Fairmont area. Two points. One is really some serious question, why six is getting pulled, because I thought we were...
Cliff, I don't mean to interrupt. Well, I do mean to interrupt. Number six is being polled, so if you have a comment on one through five, by all means, we're going to discuss six on the other side of consent as a separate item.
Okay. Number five, could we find out why wetlands is not included in that work?
Is wetlands...
We're not going to engage in direct communication, but we'll certainly follow up on...
Number five, the environmental studies contract to... The contractor does not specifically mention that they should study wetlands, and that is a concern. So, that is my point for this evening in regard to number five. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The second raised hand belongs to Rick Nahas.
Mr. Nahas, please state your name for the record. I'll let you know when you have a minute remaining.
Hi, thank you. I just want to bring your attention to item number five in regard to transportation and the EIR. The housing element specifies about 85%, I believe, of the sites, 85% of the housing units to be south of Sharp Park Road, which actually has the worst public transit. And especially if you're going to put a lot of low-income folks there, we need to consider, and I know it's going to be a tall order on the City Council, to break the habit of Samtrans, which says, "Well, we only help low-income people because we have no money." It kind of creates a downward spiral of, "Well, people aren't taking it, so they cut services." Instead, we should kind of promote that transportation should be for everybody. So, we should say that, you know, from Lindemar, we should be able to get to Bard in 15 minutes or Caltrans in 20 minutes for everybody. And then those people who have, who maybe can't afford it, we can subsidize it. And again, it's a habit that Samtrans has, asking the City Council to maybe build relationships to break that habit. The second thing that I kind of rarely see in dealing with the highways and the transportation is not much input from the police. And the police, you know, their mere presence makes people feel safe. And it might be good to just even subjectively ask them, "What do you think? You know, is there any data, even subjective data, that you might have that could help with the EIR?" Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There are no other raised hands.
Last call for public comment for items one through five. Closing public comment and bringing it back to council. Staff, if you could answer the question about why wetlands are not specifically mentioned in the document for item five, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Planning Director Christian Murdock. I believe what the commenter is referring to is the statement in the consultant proposal for item number five, that they do not propose to prepare wetland delineations for each proposed site in the housing element inventory. That's a very site-specific biological resource evaluation. It's only good for a limited period of time, and it's generally not a part of programmatic EIRs of the sort that we intend to prepare for the housing element. Certainly, evaluation of those resources, wetlands delineations where appropriate, would occur as part of a project-level environmental review if and when a particular site is proposed for development, but it's not commonplace to do that type of delineation for an EIR of this type.
Specifically because it's a programmatic EIR and therefore a higher-level study? Am I understanding that correctly?
That's generally the correct way to think of it, yes.
Okay. And then Mr. Nahas was talking about transportation. What is the appropriate level of transportation in that programmatic document?
Well, any of his particular concerns can be expressed in the scoping meeting that will precede preparation of the EIR. Those comments will be considered by the staff and consultant as they relate to the required analysis under the CEQA guidelines, and so we would invite Mr. Nahas to participate in that process.
Thank you very much.
That was actually one of my questions, too, because page 82 didn't talk about a public meeting necessarily for scoping. So, I just wanted to confirm that, because I think that's typically the case, right, that there's a public meeting, so if people have specific concerns they want to make sure addressed, they have an opportunity to speak to that.
That's right. It's common practice for us to have a publicly available or open scoping meeting for major environmental documents of this sort, and I would certainly imagine that will be part of this process.
Okay.
And Mayor Protem.
If we're done with comments, I just wanted to make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have one more, just a small correction to the minutes. On page 17, and I sent this to Sarah ahead of time, but there was a website that I had mentioned as part of the Airport Noise, and that was not properly noted, so it's stop.jetnoise.net. And I'm sorry, Christian, I did have one other question. So, I had asked in a letter, there's a discussion about the EIR and whether it's a 2030 versus a 2040 timeline, and I got a response that we're not quite ready to direct staff one way or another, but so I'm not quite sure if you're going to be seeking counsel direction on that later on, or if that's a staff decision, and maybe you can explain a little bit the nuances between the two options.
Sure. In short, I'm not ready to have that conversation tonight. It's a rather complicated question that needs to take place if the council approves the contract. There are a number of technical factors, including regional models and where our planning projections fit into those baselines, whether we need to do customized bespoke analysis to fit a different timeline, rolling back to 2030 as opposed to a lot of the regional planning work that's already shifting to 2050. And so, it's not a simple question to answer, and it is one that needs more in-depth discussion and consideration with the benefit of our consultants' expert input before I can offer, you know, an opinion on that. That is likely to be a staff-level decision in preparation of the IR, but if we're not able to make that, you know, there could be an opportunity for the council at some point.
Okay. Yeah, I just hope you keep us informed, because obviously we've gone through this once before, looking at 990 units, and now we're going to add another 1,500, but just hoping we don't have to do this every step along the way. For the EIR, as we, you know, it's a 2040 timeline, which is our general plan, we'd be looking at another housing element, obviously update in between there as well.
Sure. I mean, we do our best to make these forward-looking documents, but we do have some very particular legal requirements within the housing element process that differ somewhat from the process you're describing that was part of the general plan update. We are going to make the best technical and legal decision after that, more thorough consideration following execution of the contract.
Thank you.
Okay. I move that we approve the consent agenda, items one through five and seven and eight?
No. Consent is just one through six. We removed six, so it's one through five.
Seven and eight, aren't they considerations?
Consideration, yeah.
Okay.
One through five.
My move that we approve one through five with the correction that Christine made.
I second.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
And the items one through five with the correction to item number one passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. And City Attorney, I take up item number six on the other side of public comment, correct?
You can put it wherever you want. Usually, it's right after the consent agenda.
So, I can take it right now?
Yes.
Okay. In that case, item number six, Declaration of Surplus Property Regarding a Portion of City-Owned Property Located at 540 Cresby Drive. Proposed action: Adopt the attached resolution to declare a portion of city-owned property located at 540 Cresby as surplus land and direct city manager to follow procedures set forth in Surplus Land Act California Government Code Section 54220, et cetera. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Council Members Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. Staff is available for any specific questions regarding this item. Generally, to introduce the item, I can kick that off, and then Planning Director Murdock can also add more, as well as City Attorney Kenyon, about the Surplus Lands Act process. But this is beginning the process for surplus lands act compliance for this particular property, and the first step in that procedural process is the council's declaration of this land as surplus. And with that, I think I'll turn it over to Director Murdock to add any details, but if there are specific questions, we're here to answer them as well.
Thank you, City Manager Woodhouse. Good evening again, Mayor Big Stick and honorable council members, Planning Director Christian Murdock. As Mr. Woodhouse mentioned, this is an initial procedural step for the city to comply with the Surplus Land Act. You may be aware that the city had considered sale of this particular parcel prior to January 1st, 2023, when the exemptions for conduct of the Surplus Land Act process expired. And so, in order for the city to carry on with that process, we do need to begin the Surplus Land Act notification process, which begins in the first instance with this surplus land declaration by the City Council. We've consulted among staff and not identified any public agency use by the city for this particular parcel, and so it would be appropriate for the City Council to consider this surplus land act declaration.
Thank you very much. Do we have questions from council?
I just want to say, I thought it was important to pull it, because this is, the Surplus Land Act just came into effect in January. So, this is something new for us as a council. It's something new for the community. So, I don't even know that we've explained which parcel it is. It's, you know, right next to the community center. And so, I just, I want to make sure the public knows that staff has done this analysis and doesn't think that we need it, but there's an opportunity for you all to speak if you think it does. And I did meet with Christian and Kevin last week, because the staff report says it's very difficult to use that land as part of the community center, because there's a grade difference. But we've seen other projects proposed for that land that actually fill six feet, and that puts it above the flood zone, which would also mean, from the community center driveway, you could access, you know, this parcel and build a city building about 40 feet long by 100, 40 feet wide by 130 feet long. So, it is a buildable piece of land. It's not, you know, just a little scrap. So, I just want to make sure that we've, you know, done the analysis, that there's not something that Park and Rec or Public Works or something in the future, you know, with the additional housing element, 2,000 units, that there might be something that we as a city might want to do with that land, you know, before we offer it to others. So, there wasn't a question there. I'm just trying to help educate the public, too, and giving them an opportunity to speak. Thanks.
So, we'll certainly deliberate after public comment if there are any other questions from council. If not, I do have two cards from the public, and I believe Clifford Lawrence at least wanted to speak on the phone. So, first card is Suzanne Moore, followed by Chris Redfield. If anyone would like to speak, please fill out a yellow card in the back, and we'll have it brought up. Please state your name for the record.
Suzanne Moore, again. I support that the property at 540 Cresby be designated as surplus land. As staff reports, this law was part of an effort by the state to make public property, like this city-held property, available for development as affordable housing. It is exciting to consider possible opportunities for Pacifica to create much-needed, below-market-rate housing. The property, though limited in size, is ideally positioned near transit merchants and community resources like our community center. And as staff suggested, the plan is consistent with our City Council goal, a healthy and compassionate community, and includes addressing affordable housing, mental health services, exploring and implementing strategies that relate to homelessness, and supporting community services for all ages. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Chris Redfield?
Good evening, staff, council, Chris Redfield. I just wanted to speak tonight in support of declaring this city-owned portion of land at 540 Cresby as surplus. Its size and location does not lend itself to good use by the city on its own. This declaration is the first step under the Surplus Land Act, following the guidelines for affordable housing. The surplus sale of this property can only enhance any potential to meet Pacifica's housing needs. California government codes under the act are pretty straightforward, and this portion of land is in line for that disposition. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Emily, who do we have on the phone?
We have one raised hand. It is the phone number ending in 9309.
9309. Please state your name for the record. I'll let you know when you have one minute remaining.
Hello. Mr. Mayor, this is Clifford Lawrence again, West Fairmont.
Welcome.
I was pleased to see this on tonight's calendar. I've been concerned for some time while we discussed the 540 project on Cresby, that we were not following the SLA. It wasn't until much more recently that I found out that there was, you know, kind of an exemption period, and it didn't really kick into the first of this year. But I'm pleased that we are following the steps. And the word escapes me right now about being appropriate, but anyway, I'm glad we finally are at this point, and I look forward to, I believe at some point, there is a requirement for a report to be made to the state, an annual report on surplus lands, and I look forward to seeing that. And I look forward to seeing that, as well as seeing that the other conditions on surplus land are followed. As you proudly observe, I see myself among others in the community as kind of a watchdog in this area, and we are pleased that the city is seeing this as we did, and there has not been a circumvention. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Emily, are there any other hands raised?
There are no other raised hands.
Anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak? Seeing no one, we will close public comment and bring it back to council for deliberation or a motion. If there is no comment, a motion would be in order. Councilmember Beckmeyer.
I move approval of consent item six. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Item number six passes four to one, with Beckmeyer being the no vote.
I didn't mean to vote no.
If we could have a re-
I pressed the wrong button.
I'll reset the votes. Councilmembers, please vote again on number six.
I thought I pushed the right one. There's a little overhang here. Sorry. Let's do that again.
And the real vote on item number six is unanimous, five to zero.
And I do appreciate you educating the community. Super important.
Yeah.
All right. This brings us to public comments on items not on the posted agenda. This portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the city council on any issue that is not on the agenda. Any person wishing to address the council shall be recognized by the mayor during this time, provided, however, that only items not on the agenda for that meeting may be addressed. All remarks, we'd appreciate if were addressed to the council as a body rather than any particular member. And council members will not enter into debate with speakers under public comments on items not on the posted agenda. It is not our practice to respond in real time. If you ask us a question, we will not immediately answer it. However, under certain circumstances, we might identify a question that we want answered or a point we'd like to clarify on the other side of public comment. Maximum time of three minutes will be allowed for any speaker. Persons addressing the city council, we'd appreciate you adhering to that three-minute time, and, you know, the kinder you are to us, the better, but if things get too unruly, there are various legal maneuvers will break out to remedy that. So I have a handful of cards, starting with Suzanne Moore, then Delia McGrath, and then Santa Rosa is the last name. So please line up accordingly, and welcome. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, council and staff. Suzanne Moore from the Manor again, and I wanted to share a concern I've had for a while, the continued harassment and vandalism against participants in our safe parking program. I appreciate the work that has been done so far by the Resource Center and our community officer, but since problems persist, I want to bring it to the attention of council and the greater community. For those in the community who may not be aware, participants in our safe parking program have experienced honking, bright lights, yelling, and eggs thrown at their motorhomes. Our review to report vandalism, and it states, quote, "An incident of vandalism may be considered trivial. However, in aggregate, vandalism may be a reflection of a larger or more systematic problem in the community. Vandalism, if not addressed, could lead to other, more serious crimes," end quote. For this reason, some communities undertake a study to ascertain causation and undertake evidence-based solutions. The Safe City as a model is one example, but I'm aware that due to lack of time and resource sources for such a project in Pacifica, it's difficult. But I would hope that council and staff address the issue and provide a list of available community resources. Here are some suggestions. Vandalism is often a group crime, and an individual may feel pressured to participate. It may be hard to stop or report this crime regardless of your involvement. Please seek help to do so. Sources for help could be mental health support lines like CalHope at 833-317-4673. Help could be sought with trusted community members at your church or school if you feel uncomfortable to approach someone at the Resource Center or the Pacifica Police. Our neighbors in the safe parking program are taking the right steps to improve their lives, and the program has successfully helped families find permanent housing. As a community, we can do our part to express our support. Let the Resource Center in our city know we desire safety and dignity for our program participants. Thank you.
Thank you. Delia McGrath.
Mr. Mayor, I respectfully ask you to put me after the students from Terranova High School speak. They're going to speak during this period. Thank you.
No problem. I have one from, I believe it's Derek Santa Rosa, one from August Wilson Thornton. These two specifically have ICANN listed. Was there a third member of your group? And is there a particular order the two of you would like to go in?
Yes, first.
Come on up, followed by Delia McGrath.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Pacifica City Council. My name is Derek Santa Rosa, and along with my fellow peers, we're representing the Terranova High School, but more specifically, the Global Zero Club in our, at our high school. We basically represent an organization of students that are trying to push our local leaders and in Pacifica and California and the United States to push away from nuclear weapons and this ever-increasing threat that we're hearing in the news. And we have some flyers that I like to pass out, if that's okay? And basically, I'll describe further what it's about.
Please bring them up to City Clerk, and she'll pass them to us. This way, we maximize your time.
Great. And essentially, we're just pushing for a, for the city to endorse the appeal called the ICANN Cities Appeal. And basically, it's a global call from cities and towns in support of the UN Treaty of the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons, and ICANN stands for International Campaign to Abolish Nuclear Weapons. And essentially, to endorse the appeal, it's, we're asking you all to send an email to, there's a listed email on the form, indicating that the city of Pacifica has agreed to endorse the ICANN Cities Appeal, and the appeal is for local governments of cities and towns and nations that have not yet ratified the treaty of the prohibition of nuclear weapons. And I believe San Francisco has endorsed this appeal. And I believe that this issue is really important to us. I'm sure that, yes, we're discussing more local issues, but I believe that in a time of great stress that we're seeing in the news today of ever-increasing threats of nuclear weapons, I believe it's important for local communities around the city to, around the country, to truly endorse this idea because, I mean, every large movement in history has started with these local initiatives. And I believe that Pacifica can have a really profound impact on the push away from nuclear weapons and further world peace. Thank you.
Thank you very much. August Wilson Thornton.
Hello, Pacifica City Council. I would like to request that Fletcher Edwards be put behind me because we actually have three students who came to speak. Thank you. Derek presented the merits of this program quite well, but I would like to add to it, of course. My name is August Wilson Thornton. I am a part of the Global Zero Terranova Chapter. I'm also a voting citizen who just today graduated high school, so I guess I'm not technically a high school student. Thank you. My generation is in an interesting place history-wise. We have faced our entire, we have been faced our entire lives by the threat of nuclear annihilation. From the time that we could understand the world, we have understood that the death of humanity could occur in an instant. We, the club of Global Zero, propose that Pacifica sign the ICANN petition to help avoid humanity's possible fate. It is a simple appeal to give the organization more support in the fight to reduce the number of, to reduce the possibility of nuclear destruction. More or less, it's just adding our name to a list to allow ICANN to use our name for advocacy and possibly images from our city. This act did, at first glance to me, seem futile. I'm sure you, the Pacifica City Council as politicians, however, are well aware of things like the voter's paradox. Of course, it seems like putting in the work to approve such a simple proclamation would be in vain, but with the combined efforts of many cities, change might happen, and that requires little groups like, well, Pacifica and Global Zero. ICANN is an amazing group, and I trust that they will use our support to the fullest extent possible. I would also like to note that signing this will also support the Global Zero organization. To be honest, what you would be giving our chapter is a win. We are the only high school chapter of Global Zero, and we are their model for creating new ones. We've done a number of activity, of actions that they have said they will use to model future actions, such as creating zines. If we show that high schoolers can cause action in local government, that may be, that may be used by the greater organization to inspire high schoolers throughout the country. Overall, it is a simple pledge that will give support to a variety of organizations without spending anything, and I request that the city council of Pacifica approves this appeal to mark our city as supportive of the ICANN mission and organization. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Fletcher Edwards.
Do I press something? Do I begin?
No, just state your name for the record and go right on ahead.
My name is Fletcher Edwards, and as previously stated, I am with the Terranova Chapter of Beyond the Bomb. I am a recently graduated high, well, very, very soon to graduate high school student, and you've already heard the speech from the prior, but since I do want to respect your time, I'll try to keep this brief. I thoroughly and fully support this appeal, and I believe you should as well. It is a simple thing to do, and there are, quite frankly, no economic, nor moral, nor social downsides to it. It's really only a positive action, and I see no reason not to. I'll, again, I'll try to keep this brief, but I appreciate your support and also the work you've done for us in other situations, council members. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Delia McGrath, followed by David Halliburton and Lori Gueguero.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members and members of the audience. Thank you for this opportunity to speak, and, excuse me, I'm just thrilled that the students from Terranova High School have come before you. As the Pacifica Peace People have been in existence for 20 years, and we need, we need the younger generation to come and, and speak for peace. And I remember in March at your, your goal-setting, I stood up and said that, you know, we, the context of the work that we do here in Pacifica is our part in the bigger part, in the bigger part of the world. And I said, you know, there would be ways that the city council could take some big actions to speak for peace, to speak for the end of nuclear proliferation and the utter destruction of the planet. So this is a great opportunity. I know you can't take action tonight because it's not on the agenda, but I hope that it will be on the agenda very soon, and I'll come before you again to support it. Because it's really easy. The mayor or administrator of the local government should send an email to info@icannw.org indicating that the city, town, has agreed to endorse the ICANN Cities Appeal. This appeal is for local governments of cities, towns, and nations that have not yet ratified the treaty on the prohibition of nuclear weapons. So our country has not yet ratified that treaty, and as one of the students has already pointed out, that if so many cities in our country just put this forth, it will be some pressure to do the right thing at the national level. So thank you very much.
David Halliburton.
I came here to, today with actually one of my neighbors regarding the amount of problems we were having in Fairway Park because of the GGNR, the wildfire blooms, the pandemic, all that. It's getting absolutely miserable to live where we live, to the point I've even considered, hm, you know, just, it's, it's, GGNR has just not helped, been helpful at all, and I was hoping we can get some kind of help or support from city to talk to them about getting a, some kind of parking that is just, you know, when they took over this land, they had a ton of promises to the local residents, and they didn't do anything that they said they were going to do. They said this wasn't going to be a public trail. It's a public trail, and now we have thousands and thousands and thousands of people showing up every Saturday, every Sunday, picnicking on our lawn, throwing garbage everywhere. They are, they just, you hear six o'clock, seven o'clock in the morning, people arguing in front of our houses because we're at the very end of Fairway, right where the golf course ends, and PoliWog Trail, as it's called, starts. But it is getting to the point where it's ruining all the neighbors' lives around us. I mean, anyone that lives on that end is just livid, and it's getting to the point where, like, you have to put five-gallon buckets in front of your driveway so people don't block us in so we can get to work. I've had to drive over my lawn multiple times. It's just the lack of respect, and it's, if GGNR wanted to make this, you know, take over this land and do what, not then, they shouldn't have made it. They came after we purchased our property. They should have been a little more thoughtful with how they're going about it. You have all this open land in Rockaway doing nothing. I mean, all they have to do is do a parking lot. You have this nice trail that goes right up to look at whatever they want to do. They shouldn't be, I mean, this, this, where they park in front of our houses, it's just, it's literally, if you guys could see it on a weekend, it is insane. And it's just getting worse and worse to the point where, like, I'm glad I work weekends because, hm, it wouldn't be. It's not, it's no fun at all, and I don't know what to do. That's why, kind of, we just came hoping that we could, like, bring it up to you if there's any way. Because if you try to call the numbers, Virginia, no responses, emails don't get answered, nothing. I just, it's, it's to the point now, it's the amount of frustration. I don't even want to leave my garage door open on the weekends because of the amount of people. You can't, we can't have our dog outside on the lawn with us because of the amount of chaos. It's just, it's just ridiculous, but nobody's doing anything about it. I just wish we could burn that bridge down and just, like, I wish the trail was just not there. Nobody abides by it, no, any rules, garbage every day. It's just, I'm not really one to complain and stuff, but if I, if it gets me up doing this, it's, it's pretty bad. Thank you guys so much for just listening.
Thank you for your comments. Lori Gueguero, followed by Eric Williamsy, and then Carolyn Yaramio is my final card before I ask after the call-ins.
Hi there, everybody. I am also here to readdress the issues going on in Fairway Park about Maury Point. The last time you guys probably heard from us was well over a year ago. I haven't heard or seen of any progress or updates of anything, plans in action, and obviously, things have just incredibly gotten worse. We all know how Fog Fest affects the community and the residents and all the work that goes into protecting them and making things go smoothly. We have been under siege, drowning, begging for help, and we have received nothing, nothing at all. The public has come in and literally taken over our neighborhood. They don't care about the flowers. They don't care about the frogs. They don't care about the snakes. We tell them this is sensitive habitat. This trail is a sensitive habitat, and it is not on GGNR's map for a reason. and it is not on GG NRA's map for a reason. You know, we have been there cleaning up garbage, protecting this area. I live right at the Polywog Path, which is not supposed to even have a name. And everybody, all these YouTubers and Instagrammers, all they care about is getting their picture and posting and tags and hits and likes. And we're over here with no power, hands tied, people hitting our cars every single day, policing our neighborhood. And every time we call the police, maybe they'll come, maybe they'll be able to. They're under, they're under siege too. All of Pacifica, I think, felt this last Mother's Day weekend. Nobody has hurt us, nobody has done anything. And a lot of the neighbors don't, they're not affected most of the time. I am, a lot of the neighbors close to the Polywog Path are affected. A lot of people, of course, obviously over by Bradford are affected. It is unfair for them as well to have this entrance. We have no peace of mind, and we just are begging for help. We have people taking over our neighborhood, and we are paying the taxes, and they're making the complaints about everything. And then the cops come and they get their way, and we sit there getting our houses and cars keyed, tagged, anything, spray painted. We are being victimized in our own homes. There's no peace. The doors, the slams, the beeps, the car, the stomping, the laughing. I don't even enjoy laughing and laughter anymore. It's unbearable. And I have a whole long list of other things that we can complain about all day, which I'm sure you've heard all of them. We are just asking for help. Maury Point needs to have their own parking lot that is not in a residential area. Because somebody wants to go to the beach or go have fun, we should not have to know about it or be bothered by it or put a can or something. We couldn't even get home. I mean, there was an emergency that was on Maury Point because somebody went too far on the cliff, and they couldn't even get to them on the road. There was a chopper out there trying to get to them. We are safety hazard, fire hazard, all of the above. We are just begging you, please, lead us in the right direction so we can have sanctuary and sanity in our home, because I am losing my mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Williamsy.
Hello. My name is Eric Williamsy. I'm a teacher at Terranova High School. I teach social science, and I'm also the advisor for our high school club chapter of Global Zero, which is part of a national nonprofit dedicated to the elimination of the threat of nuclear weapons. As we are all acutely aware, the world is closer to use, whether by accident, madness, or miscalculation of nuclear weapons than it has since the darkest days of the Cold War. In January 2021, the international campaign to abolish nuclear weapons, known as ICAN, after years of unrelenting work successfully lobbied the United Nations to pass the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. However, the nine nuclear armed states have failed to adhere to this new internationally binding agreement. As part of a worldwide grassroots movement to appeal to the nine nuclear armed states, ICAN has launched its city's appeal campaign in which municipalities across the world call on the remaining governments to adopt the treaty. The stakes are higher than ever. If we as citizens of the world do not raise our voices, we are resigning ourselves to the sword of Damocles and the ever increasing risk of nuclear war. We ask that the City Council of Pacifica introduce, I'm not exactly sure how it works, but I'm assuming a council member or the mayor, the mayor pro tem, introduce the, as an agenda item. Okay, that's, and introduce it and pass it and add your names to the growing list of cities worldwide, Prague, London, New York City, Tokyo, that asks our own federal governments to ratify the treaty. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn Yarimio. You are my last card. If anyone wishes to speak, please fill out one in the back and bring it up.
Good evening, Council. My name is Carolyn Yarimio. I'm speaking tonight to support the students from Terranova High School in their request to have Pacifica join numerous other cities across the country in support of the international campaign for the abolition of nuclear weapons. I applaud these students and their teacher for their civic engagement. I know that they have spoken and put forth their request very eloquently. So tonight, I just want to share a quote. I've seen this quote numerous times, but it's the last two sentences that I think we need to hear tonight. "Every gun that is made, every warship launched, every rocket fired signifies in the final sense a theft from those who hunger and are not fed, those who are cold and not clothed." It's these last two lines that I think are really important tonight. "This world in arms is not spending money alone. It's spending the sweat of its laborers, the genius of its scientists, and the hopes of its children." Dwight D. Eisenhower. So I urge you to consider this request as an opportunity, an opportunity to give our youngest residents here hope. Hope that they will have a future. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily?
We have two raised hands. The first hand is a number ending in 9309.
Caller 9309, please state your name for the record, and I'll let you know when you have a minute remaining.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. This is Cliff Lawrence again from West Fairmont. Following, this, this is a really hard act to follow. I've got to say that I hope you do support the petition that you've explicitly support tonight. My call is about another seemingly less important thing. I have one question for the board tonight. About a week ago, I was told that the reason why the city didn't do one particular thing was because it was not required. That word just stuck in my head for a whole week. Is this what the City Council policy is? Then it would appear to be a very low bar. Do we really want to do only what is required? Is that what they call the bare minimum? So I'm here tonight to ask the City Policy Making Board body this one question. Is this your policy to only do what is required? Thank you.
Thank you.
The second hand is Petra.
Petra, please state your full name for the record, and I'll let you know when you have a minute remaining of your three minutes.
Yes, my name is Petra Kretschmer. And thank you, Mayor and council members. I was hoping that I could add a link, but it doesn't look like I can do that or show you pictures through Zoom. And unfortunately, I had an appointment, so I couldn't get to the meeting. I would like to first off say thank you to Sue Faderlaus, and also, well, I actually spoke to you the other day. And Mary, I left, Mary Beer, I left you a message, and it was a little disjointed because people were walking by and talking. But also with the Fairway issue and the amount of people that are coming. So there's a few things, this came from when, obviously before you, but these neighbors that are talking now were in this neighborhood before the park service came in. So there's a history there. This was what was stated prior to them coming in and that they would have recreational activities consistent with public safety needs, rights of property owners, and the natural resource areas from overuse, including at each point identified, okay, that's figures, okay, for Maury Point. Provide access in a manner that takes into account the need to regulate the time, place, and manner that access is provided, based on such factors as topographic, or topographic and site constraints and fragility of natural resources and the privacy of adjacent residential issues. Continue to distribute public facilities, including parking areas or facilities, so as to mitigate, mitigate against the impacts of overcrowding or overuse by the public of any single area. And I, I'm really kind of upset that I show you my pictures. Because you would have seen a line of people up bootlegger steps, waiting in line like they're at Disneyland. People on the trail, 20, 30 at a time. You have people on our properties, you have dogs on people's properties harassing people's pets. The other thing I want to talk about with the time constraint is, how about the noise ordinance? You have any loud, disturbing, unnecessary, or unusual noise and/or noise which annoys, disturbs, injures, or endangers the comfort, health, repose, peace, or safety of other persons within the city. That is Section 5-10 dot 0, point 02, that's in your own code. It is absolutely ridiculous. It took an hour to get in here. You have cars double parked, you have cars parked over our driveway, you have cars parked in front of fire hydrants. Somebody, please, needs to do something. When I talked to Ms.
So you are coming to the end of your three minutes? If you'd be so kind as to.
About places. How about the sewer plant that sits there empty? Or the area in between Rockaway and Valymar and making that a dirt parking lot until somebody, I don't know who owns the property. But at least have somewhere else rather than in this neighborhood where we cannot live. It goes from six in the morning.
Thank you very much. So I'm going to have to ask you to stop at this point. It has been three minutes, but we hear you.
Can, can I just ask a question? Is there a place to send what I do have?
Absolutely. Please send it to the email. You can send it.
The email address is publiccomment@pacifica.gov.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no other raised hands.
Anyone else from the audience wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. I am moved to make a couple brief comments.
Your big stick? Your big stick?
Yes.
We have one, we have two raised hands after.
Two raised hands?
Yeah.
I will reopen public comment for those two raised hands.
The first raised hand is a number ending in 2978.
2978, please state your name for the record. I will let you know when you have a minute remaining.
Hello. My name is Kelly Sanchez. I also live in Fairway Park. I am also dealing with.
You may have inadvertently muted.
Oh, shoot.
There, I hear you now.
Am I unmuted?
You are unmuted. Sarah, can we reset the clock? No problem at all. We're resetting your clock.
Okay. Okay. So my other neighbors did a very good job of illustrating what we've been going through. The problem has gotten worse. It is not getting better. The last four weeks have been extreme. And I'm not exaggerating when I say there are thousands of people coming into our neighborhood on the weekends. And we had two weeks straight where it was happening during the week. We had Wednesday and Thursday, seven o'clock in the morning, they started filling up on Fairway and leaving when the sun was going down. It's a very dangerous situation. The police officers are allowing cars to park on corners. And there's, they are always parking in front of fire hydrants. There's cars doubling up in front of fire hydrants. I think one very quick solution to some of this problem is getting crosswalks painted in our neighborhood so that parking on corners is not allowed. There was somebody in a wheelchair trying to cross the street right on Marina and Fairway because people were parked on the corners. They were out in the middle of Fairway with people speeding down the street. And nobody cares about all of this activity that's going on. They're just here to have a good time. They didn't even care that this person was in a wheelchair trying to get up onto the other sidewalk. I think just a quick solution is get some crosswalks painted so that parking on corners is not allowed, so that people have a straight shot to walk. But we do have to do something about the parking. There's space over in Rockaway. They can carve out another trail system over there, and people can get up to Maury Point very easily. You keep people closer to the businesses so that Pacifica businesses are benefiting from all of this traffic that is finally coming to town. You guys have wanted this for so long, you finally have people coming. Let's get them over to the businesses.
One minute.
And, and as the others have said, GG NRA, they do not answer our calls. They do not want to talk about our problem. Every time I've called GG NRA, I've talked to people, but they told me that it's a Pacifica problem. It is not a GG NRA problem. So they are not receptive. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
The next hand is a number ending in 6822.
Number 6822, please state your name for the record. I'll let you know when you have a minute remaining. I believe it's star six to unmute.
Hi. My name is Mark Hubbell.
Hi, Mark.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You know, I think this idea of the 161 dump trucks dumping dirt in, into the quarry area per day, you know, 161 trucks a day, five days a week, is an incredibly stupid idea. But it's also going to make it really bad for the people in Fairway Park. It's going to really magn, magnify their problem there. And, you know, it's just another reason why this is just, should never happen. And I really feel bad for them because this last weekend, I got stuck in that traffic for almost 45 minutes along, you know, that road that runs along the side there by the Moose Lodge. Forty-five minutes I sat there because cars were coming from both directions. But anyway, I think this, this idea of all these dump trucks, you know, is just a terrible idea. And I would not, rather not have the rest of the Bay Area. Think of Pacifica as Pacifica, it's a real dump. But unfortunately, that'll be the case, that'll be the truth. So thank you for listening. Bye.
Thank you, Mark. Any other hands raised?
There are no other raised hands.
Okay, I am going to close public comment at this time. I'm moved by the, well, a couple groups of comments, and the first being the folks at Fairway. This is not a new issue, and I think I'm going to have to have a follow-up with city manager to see what needs to be done. City attorney, am I within my range if I ask the new police chief to give initial thoughts or?
You, you can ask questions of staff.
Yes.
Yes.
You heard a lot of the community, and I was wondering to our new chief of police, Maria Sarasua, if any initial thoughts start percolating as you are hearing the community. It does seem to be a public safety matter.
And Mayor Biszkic, if I could chime in while Chief Sarasua comes up. So this, a couple of years ago, the OSPAC, the Open Space Parkland Advisory Committee engaged this issue with council liaisons with GG NRA, Caltrans, and I think other stakeholders. And I believe it might have been Councilmember Beer and Mayor Pro Tem Vaterlaus that were involved in those conversations. Recently, we had another update meeting with Caltrans staff where some of the traffic concerns in this issue, in this area were raised as it pertains to Highway One. But following the, the recent recurrence of the traffic there, we are in the process of reaching out to GG NRA. of reaching out to GGNR to reengage this with them, see what the status is of working on the previous concepts related to building parking in that area and other potential alternatives. So it's something we're in the process of following up on with GGNR. I did hear from Chief Sarasua that Police Department was very busy over the last couple weekends issuing quite a few citations. She might have that information she could provide. So they're they're trying to do what they can do. And I think part of this impact was exacerbated by the wildflower bloom in springtime. But it is an ongoing issue and concern, and we're trying to think creatively about what could be done and how and what GGNR can help do.
And in point of fact, at the OSPAC meeting I'll be mentioning shortly, there was a GGNR representative there talking a little bit about it, and I think specifically some signage regarding the underpass. But the comments that were made at that meeting were by far drowned out in my mind by the community who came out tonight. So I appreciate that it's going to take a group effort to find the solutions needed. And I did want to give our chief an opportunity to say a word or two, if she feels so inclined.
Distinguished mayor and council members, we were out there last week. There was an acute influx of tourists that came to see the bloom after it was advertised on media outlets. We issued approximately twenty-eight citations. And unfortunately, this fell on Mother's Day, which was, you know, difficult for some people to receive those citations. However, we wanted to have zero tolerance because of the impact to the residents in that area. So I'm just gonna echo Mr. Woodhouse's comments about this being a collaborative approach with additional parking. This is, I think, a more sustainable, long-term solution than going out and issuing citations every single weekend.
I appreciate the numerous first steps taken, but I think if NBC News is going to start making it a habit to report on our neck of the woods, we need to, at least I need to start having that conversation to make sure I understand the robust nature of the next steps forward. So thank you very much. As for the swath of our community that came out to talk about ICANN, and I do wish some of them had stuck around, I believe Mr. August Wilson Thornton reached out to me by email prior, and so I know I at least have his contact. And if you are hearing this, I fully intend on reaching out to you and perhaps arranging a meeting between yourself and myself and city manager to discuss the appropriateness of putting that on the agenda for a future meeting. So that's the headline there. So with that, I will bring it back to council communication.
Mayor Big Stick, one comment that I'll make regarding this topic, and of course, it's the council's prerogative to do as they'd like regarding it, is from time to time there are global issues that come forward. There are national issues that don't really pertain specifically to the actions that we're focused on, city council is focused on in in Pacifica, but they're obviously important issues. There's often calls for mayors to sign on to different initiatives, and it's always the mayor's prerogative to do so in this case. And part of the balance is how much how much staff time, how much agenda time gets devoted to these issues versus other local issues, and we have busy agendas coming up. But one thing I would say is that if there's a head nod of councils that the mayor should sign on to ICANN, then the message is clear that you can go ahead and do that with the with the city's support, and then it may not be necessary to take the time to agendize the item in the future.
Well, I'm certainly seeing head nods. So if it's legally advisable that I can go ahead and sign on without agendizing it, I appreciate that leeway. Very good. With that, council communication, and I have a light from Councilmember Beer.
Thank you. And thank you for coming out, Fairway. I was in on those meetings. So when you all came out to OSPAC, OSPAC presented a letter to us. We got together with GGNR and Caltrans, which is one thing is super hard to do. So to try to get a meeting with all of those people was a really hard thing. And I don't know how long it took us to get that meeting. But there was a lot of things discussed at that meeting. There's also been discussions with the Moose Lodge, and they weren't able to do what they wanted to do. And there's, it's, there's a coastal zone issue as well. So we have to deal with the Coastal Commission. But I do want to let you know that we have been working on it. Things take incredibly a long time in government. And so I know there was a follow-up meeting that I wasn't a part of, but I just really wanted you to understand that we have been trying to do things. Obviously, it's not enough. So thanks for coming. I appreciate it.
Can I ask a question on OSPAC related to this topic? Who's the liaison with OSPAC?
I am.
Has GGNR been sending a representative to those meetings routinely?
Yes, they have.
Okay. I'm sure they'll be hearing from you at the next meeting.
Oh, certainly. And of course, those are public meetings. So if anyone from the neighborhood wishes to attend the next OSPAC meeting, I believe it's the third Wednesday of the month at six o'clock PM, we meet in the community center.
And that's open space?
Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee.
Okay. So, yeah, I was busy, just like everybody else. And I know our report backs have been taking a little time, so I'm just gonna go kind of go through my things quickly this time. I attended the Peninsula Division Executive Committee. We talked about the events that'll be coming up, and we're looking at September to do an event on mental health. So I'll let you know when that's coming up. I attended the Economic Development Committee meeting, where they're looking at their work plan, and they're introducing a new commissioner. That was really nice. Pride, Pride Planning, so many things, like we're meeting once a week now, so there's that. And then we had de-escalation training. And then we had a safety meeting with the Police Department. So thank you so much to Capitol Commence and to Public Works for being there and for trying to think creatively of how we can have a parade and not have us cost, you know, a million dollars. And thank you, Alyssa, for all of your help. You've been a godsend to us and to our planning group. So thank you. I attended Housing Our People Effectively Meeting, which is HOPE, and we got an update on the Navigation Center. We attended the swearing-in for our new police chief. That was beautiful and inspiring. And, you know, seeing our new police chief standing up there with our new sheriff was just for the, it's just for the books, you know? It's just like so-
Awesome.
I attended Oceana Senior Awards Night. We had an age-friendly coalition meeting. We'll be talking about a panel on housing. I'll get you the date on that because it's coming up pretty soon. We all attended the committee and commission interviews. I attended the Mental Health Service Act meeting where we heard about the governor's proposal to redirect MHSA funding, which is Mental Health Service Act funding. It's not a good thing. Please pay attention to this. We're gonna be hearing a lot more about it, but we're gonna have to make some noise. So, yeah, pay attention to that. It was an honor for me to attend Congresswoman Schu's Youth Advisory Board Policy Presentation. Oh my goodness. You know, I think I should probably write out the notes. These young people, they just, they were amazing. They reported back on so many different topics, probably twenty different policy suggestions. And, yeah, you know what? We need to listen to our young people because these kids were just on it. And like I said, I should probably write out the notes so that we have that, just because it's worth, like, to read the whole thing, just to hear about every single thing that they talked about, because there were so many things. It's kind of hard to say it all right now. And then we went to the Farm Workers Summit, which was really, really important for us to be there and to hear about what our colleagues are doing in Half Moon Bay and how we can stand in solidarity with them. That's it.
Councilmember Beckmeyer.
I attended many of the same meetings, so I won't reiterate those. I will say that I had an opportunity on the Friday, the 12th, to speak with students at Hildale School in Daly City about the job of serving as a city council member. So that was really fun. And it was my great honor and pleasure to attend Richard Rusciano's dinner, the dinner honoring him at the Moose Lodge on Saturday, the 13th. Thank you, Louis Langley at the Department of Public Works for assisting Captain Clements with our planning for Pride and figuring, helping us figure out how to make that happen. And the Resource Management and Climate Protection Committee meeting, I was able to attend by Zoom because I was traveling to, to, where'd I go?
Newport Beach.
Newport Beach, yeah. That's it. Newport Beach. Last Wednesday, I changed my travel plan, so I went Wednesday evening for the Thursday-Friday conference. And that was Smart Coast. It was a very packed agenda. The title of the event was One California, One Coast. And what I was really pleased about was the executive director of the Coastal Commission was there. And there was a real opportunity for a sharing of information among lots of different folks. It was kind of intimidating, I'll be honest. I was on the opening panel with my colleague Eric Friedman, who's the chair of the Coastal Cities Group. And we were on a panel with woman Ella, I forgot her last name, from the Ocean Protection Council Climate Change Program. So it was really great to hear the programs that they have available, and they have an intern program that I want to explore to help us possibly maybe with some additional staff. So it was very packed time, really good information. I agree. I need to write it up so you can hear more specifics from me. But the gist of my presentation, Eric gave the overview of what the Coastal Cities Group has been doing in terms of working with the Coastal Commission Sea Level Rise Local Working Group on strategies for working with Coastal Commission staff. And then I was able to bring our Sea Level Rise Adaptation Coastal Infrastructure, just gave some highlights of what we've been doing in Pacifica around some of our different projects going down the coast and how that, what that looks like on the ground for a city like ours. And so it was great because it was a statewide group, and a lot of folks didn't know where Pacifica is. So we were able to get some, some information out to the rest of the state on that. So that was great. And the Farm Worker Policy Symposium was so eye-opening, and I was really pleased to see Representative from Anna Schu's office. We had our state representatives there, Josh Becker and Mark Berman, and Diane Pappan was there, and Ray Mueller. And we really heard some, some of what the needs are in our immediate neighbors to the south in terms of housing, in terms of supportive services for them. And I'm trying to figure out exactly how we, Pacifica, can support that. One way, I mean, I can't speak for the whole council, but I remember Mark Berman made a comment. He's like, "Don't tell my other cities," as he said publicly at the meeting. But he's been working on a $2 million affordable housing, some funding from the state in conjunction with Josh Becker matching and working with what they're giving from the county level to invest in affordable housing being built in near vicinity to where the farm workers are working. And, you know, and this is all addressing the issue that came to light as a result of the shooting that occurred in January and the really unacceptably deplorable living conditions that so many of the ag workers in that area are living in. And so I'm really pleased to see some movement happening there. And so I guess a way that Pacifica can help is not vie for that money right now because it seems like it's being focused on the greatest need right now. So that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bolts.
I'll skip the things that you all have talked about as well. I got to give a presentation to the Oceana High School Sustainability Club about electrification and green building and also our climate action plan and trying to get a few of them to hopefully help and be involved with that. And then several meetings with the Pacifica Climate Committee, and just a great event at the Pedro Point Firehouse this past Thursday. There were about seventy-five people in attendance. The room was just packed. Christian gave a lovely presentation about, you know, the city's work and also letting them know about the climate action plan that we're gonna be discussing tonight and encouraging people to apply. There are so many rebates and incentives out there now to replace your gas equipment with electric, which just makes such a huge difference in the fight against climate change, you know, between Peninsula Clean Energy and local groups like Bayren, but also with the Federal Infrastructure Act, there's even more money, you know, coming out now. So basically, you can get some things for free. So really encourage you to follow up. I was really pleased to, actually, I've gotten to tour PCT before. I'll talk about that in a minute. But they kindly offered to film the event that night. And so for anyone who missed it, that'll, that'll be available. And, yeah, and then as part of that, as a follow-up, my husband and I built the first all-electric net-zero energy house. And so we're gonna be offering tours again on June 17th as a follow-up. So all these neat heat pumps, you can come see in action. And, yeah, and I want to thank Marty and Cheryl Amateur for giving me a tour of PCT and just kind of understanding what they do and how they do it and what an amazing service they provide to our community, not just in these public meetings, but as education and opportunities for podcasts and other things. And how many awards they have won? There really aren't that many community television nonprofits like this in the country. And it's just a reminder, you know, with the political divisions in the last few years and how information can be manipulated, just the importance of public TV and, you know, a variety of voices. So thank you for all you do. I also got my Park and Rec onboarding. I'm still meeting with different departments. I want to thank Bob and his amazing staff for all they do. And one thing I learned is you get to be a senior when you turn 60, which I will be in January, and you can participate in all these wonderful senior meetings. We were, as we were interviewing commission candidates, I saw a bunch of seniors lining up, and it turns out they were doing line dancing. And these classes are only like one to $4. So just incredible things that Park and Rec provide for our community. And then I got to see Bob again the next night, presenting to the Emergency Preparedness Committee about the life buoys and beach safety, which, again, they will be taking up as part of an education at Fog Fest. And then really exciting, this May has been Affordable Housing Month. And last Friday, I got to go to a breakfast with the Housing Leadership Council. Like, all the major housing developers were there. So getting to speak with a lot of them and advocates. Josh Becker was there also, talking about some of his new legislation and projects he's working on, one of which is, you know, there's a lot of land owned by public agencies that sits vacant for a long time, like even just thinking of our beach boulevard, you know, right next door. And he's looking at a program to, to bring in prefab housing units on a temporary basis. So it's something that can be put in and then moved later on, but to provide, you know, on a really quick schedule, housing for most vulnerable. We got to go to the ribbon cutting for a new Eden Housing project in East Palo Alto. And this was a project they were rebuilding that had ninety-four units. And they came to their council, and the council was like, "Can't you build more?" So they actually doubled the number of units to 185, redesigned their project. And, and that project is just opening up, and again, with all the support services to really help people get back on their feet. And then a meeting with Habitat this week, because they had a really exciting project, too, just on a half-acre parcel in downtown Redwood City that most housing developers wouldn't even touch because it was too small. And everything I'm hearing is like seventy to 120 units is what, is what they're looking for. So this is a half-acre site. They built twenty units of missing-middle family townhomes on that. So their density ended up, if you remember, in our general plan, our highest density is fifty units- is 50 units per acre. This is 174 units per acre. And so sometimes this is what it takes, you know, to build densely to be able to, to build these projects. So I'm learning a lot and, and hoping to build relationships and, and start to bring some of this to Pacifica. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
I attended the Fairmont Subdivision Homeowners Association meeting. They're mostly concerned about the turn on to the highway from Hickey, which we've been discussing with Caltrans for a number of years, many years, still on the same list. Excuse me. We all attended the swearing-in for the new police chief, and she's not only intelligent, but she threw a little fun in there too. So that was nice. The City and County Association of Governments, I do two meetings with them. One is legislative and we go over all the current bills. And the other is a regular committee or council meeting, actually. And they're finally done with managed lanes, so, sorry. We got our final thing on managed lanes, so I won't ever have to talk about that ever again. I did ask that they now come to Pacifica and bring their money. Excuse me. Maybe I should let you go. The, I also am on the County Recovery Council. It used to be the COVID Recovery Council, and now we've changed it to recovery and we're going to continue meeting because there's so many important topics in the county. I'm going to let you go.
So I'd start by saying hello to Jack Bridgett, who's in the audience from North Coast Counter Water District. Welcome. And as always, my thoughts were with Ukraine, especially as I've been seeing the headlines over the last week or two. Swearing in of our new chief, fabulous, fabulous. I'm going to go quickly, as much as I'd love to elaborate. I attended the honoring of Gentry Smith at Filoli through the Office of Protocol. Fascinating man who is a U.S. diplomat. The interesting takeaway was that there's this event going on in San Francisco in November called APEC, when a bunch of world leaders will be descending on the Bay Area, so stay tuned for that. November 15th and 16th. It's going to be held at the Moscone Center. I had a PRC board meeting later that night. It's liaison amongst the other facts that were numerous. One is that the PRC is currently helping one out of eight families in Pacifica. Back when I was on the board, it was one out of 10, and now we're up to one out of eight. We could be still serving half the families in Pacifica. And it was good to hear that PRC is working with Pacifica, the city, to find funding grants for bridge housing. I attended the Rich Risotano Honoring at the Moose. There was a library JPA board meeting. It's budget time everywhere, so we were talking about budget amongst the various programs, Big Lift, Power Up Afternoons, Art for All, and Mental Health First Aid. Also now, the San Mateo County Library System is offering period supplies in women's restrooms throughout the system. They figure, you know, if we have toilet paper and soap, we should probably be offering period supplies also. Atherton Library is getting all sorts of recognition as the new library in town architecturally and beyond. And again, it makes me look forward to the day that we might have our new library. And I learned from one of the members of the JPA that Mill Bray will be having a Juneteenth celebration on the 17th of June at their rec center from 11:00 to 3:00. Had a LAFCO meeting last Wednesday, again with budget time. We heard about the Broadmoor Police Protection District, which, I mean, with that, the next item was about the dissolution of special districts, so they're kind of unnoticed, but we're hopeful that they might figure out what they need to do to make their ends meet. AB 930 is one to keep our eye on. It's about what are called RISE districts. And while I don't understand it robustly, I think the general idea is that municipalities that are sharing a border can kind of get together to form a district to help each other with their affordable housing. So how that factors into arena numbers, I couldn't tell you, but it's just an interesting bit of legislation to keep our eye on. One of the big picture topics at LAFCO, as far as LAFCO goes, is the East Palo Alto Sanitary Sewer District coming before us as becoming a subsidy of East Palo Alto. So it'll be a big one when it comes up in July. Now I got, I attended the Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee meeting, as I mentioned earlier, along with the brief update on the Fairmont neighborhood from GGNRA. There was also an interesting educational bit about the Mission Blue Butterfly. June 10th from 9:00 AM to 12:00 is Ospac's next workday. It's going to be at the top of Fassler. They've been doing great work in maintaining the trails up there as a volunteer workday, and they're going to keep that going, so stay tuned. If you feel like lending a hand, just meet with them, 9:00 AM on the Saturday, the 10th, top of Fassler. Attended the electrification meeting at the Pedro Point Firehouse. Briefly stopped in at the sports breakfast on Saturday to bring the certificates and congratulate the honorees. I had to leave rather quickly to get to the City Democrats meeting to do the State of the City talk with our city manager. From there, I briefly stopped at the Terranova Car Show before heading to the Farmworker Summit in Half Moon Bay. It was great to see all our electeds there, including Deborah Penrose, who is the mayor of Half Moon Bay. There were also representatives from Alas Puente, Coastside Hope. These are the nonprofits, the kind of equivalents of the Pacifica Resource Center south of the tunnel. And it was good to hear about water, healthcare, and housing. Ray Mueller is a heck of a champion for the farmworker community down there since the shooting, bringing together all these various pieces to form robust housing for farmworkers in that area. So we are once again very blessed to have him representing us. And a lot of regional leaders also showed up, including Gina Pappin, Diane Sister, and Emily Beach. And briefly, I, I watched the One Shoreline meeting as long as I could today. They were talking about planning guidance policy for the Bayside, kind of the equivalence of some of the guidance principles that the Coastal Commission has put forth for the coast side. So hearing their process in forming that planning guidance and making very clear that it was more suggestive than mandatory was interesting. And also, the statement that BCDC, which is the Bayside's equivalent of Coastal Commission, was learning from One Shoreline and One Shoreline was learning from them, was an interesting and happy message to hear. And then I just wanted to state that the next Peninsula Clean Energy meeting is going to be coming up on Thursday, the 24th at 6:30. The proper address is in Menlo Park, but you're welcome to tune in by Zoom if you have the interest. Councilmember Vatterlaus, did you have more you wanted?
Oh, yeah. We all attended interviews for commissions and committees, and that's always good. And we like to see multiple people turn out for multiple positions. I did attend Public Works Day, which was so fun to learn all about the sewer sucker trucks and the signs. And last year, I rode up in the tree bucket about 50 feet off the ground. I didn't do it this year. Once is enough. I attended the Fog Fest Board. They're getting ready and plans are totally in progress for everything going forward with Fog Fest. It's exciting. I also attended the electrification meeting at the firehouse and all the other things that Tiger did on Saturday, the sports breakfast, the State of the City at the Democrats, the Terranova Car Show, and fire prevention information at the Community Center. It was an extremely busy day, and I would have gone to the farmworkers, but I had another event later. I also, in Sacramento, talking to Mark Berman suggested that they look at the Navigation Center as a plan for farmworker housing because it can be done very rapidly and self-contained units. Having gone to the Navigation Center and seen what they, they actually built, I believe, 240 units in less than a year. And that includes the permits, the acquisition, acquisition of all of those units being built, and everything inclusive in one year and one day. So I think they could get that done also for the, for the farmworkers. And that's it. Thank you for letting me talk.
Can I just say one?
Of course.
Because our next meeting, by the time we meet again, it'll be over. The San Mateo County Fair begins Saturday, June 3rd. It's running through Sunday, June 11th, except for Monday and Tuesday, the 5th and 6th is closed. But it is a fantastic opportunity and lots of our local, especially students, are engaged with 4H projects there. And so it's just a fun time, but it's also a great reflection of our, our county, and I encourage everyone to go.
And they have Coastal Day.
Yes, yeah. Coastal Day is the 11th, the last.
The last day.
Yeah.
Staff communications.
Thank you, Mayor Big Stick. Councilmembers Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. Several communications I'd like to convey. One, we've heard a bit about Public Works Appreciation Week this week. And last week, the celebratory events were held. This week is a busy week for Public Works because they'll be spending quite a bit of time touring around the city to our storm damaged sites with a team from FEMA because we had put in for reimbursement, hopefully for many of those sites. So much of the celebration happened last week, even though this week is actually the Appreciation Week. Also, last week was actually National Police Recognition or Appreciation Week. And I, I do know that the chief and a team on just this past Saturday were at Tanforan Mall with, participating, I think with other agencies, but recruiting and had, had our team out there to talk about policing as a career and, and talk about Pacifica specifically. Today was an exciting morning because we welcomed an intern, a cohort of interns, summer interns, to the city. So this year, we have seven interns that we've hired to work in a variety of departments, and five of them started today, a couple will start later. But it was great to meet them. They're all in college or recent college graduates and quite a skilled bunch that are very excited to learn about city government and the different departments they'll be serving in. So that was very exciting. The Thursday before last, I don't think it was mentioned yet, but the California Coastal Commission unanimously approved the city's SURF school, SURF camp, diversity, equity, inclusion policy and program. And so that's an exciting milestone, and the Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Department will be turning around toward the implementation actions for that program. And finally, I wanted to mention that this afternoon, I had the, the privilege of helping to co-teach a class for the San Mateo County Leadership Academy, which is for employees in the county, in the cities and, and the county. And this class was about public policymaking and city staff role or staff role in that process. So it was an exciting afternoon with several case studies that the group went through. And pretty exciting was that my, I was, I had the opportunity to collaborate with a very well-seasoned city manager in, in California, Ken Hampian, who served for about 20 years as assistant and then city manager in San Luis Obispo. But of, of note is that if the council remembers the City of Bell scandal that, that rose many years ago, Ken, who had recently retired from San Luis Obispo, was called in to be the first city manager on a pro bono basis to work to clean up that mess in Bell. So statewide, Ken, nationwide, actually, Ken's very well-known. But it was a great opportunity to partner with him and help to give this course.
Cool.
Yeah. That completes my communications.
Well done, city manager. I will say on the SURF camps that what I keep hearing over and over from Coastal Commission is that they wish to use it as a model for how other cities up and down the coast will be dealing with their SURF camp issues. So I think it's a wonderful thing that, that work that our community put in gets to translate past our own borders. Councilmember Beer, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the interns. As someone who oversees interns, I know how much time and effort it takes to supervise them, create work plans for them, make sure they stay on task, and that they have a good experience, right? And so I appreciate it. Seven interns is a lot to take on. And so I just want to appreciate staff for doing that because I know how much work it goes into to have an intern.
So thank you. There are no public hearings. That brings us to consideration. Counsel, are we okay to go forward or does, do we need a break? Okay. So we're going to take a 10-minute recess. We'll reconvene at?
This is 10.
Nine-minute recess. 10, 9:35.
Don't say that.
Good evening. The time is now 9:35. We are reconvening the regular session of the City of Pacifica City Council meeting. We are on to consideration item number seven, consideration of resolution creating the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan Task Force. Proposed action, consider and adopt the attached resolution of the City Council creating the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan Task Force. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Alyssa. I'm a management analyst in the City Manager's Office. With me tonight is Elizabeth Brooks, Management Analyst in the City Manager's Office and the Planning Department. Elizabeth and I will be presenting to City Council tonight focusing on Pacifica's Climate Action and Adaptation Task Force. Next slide, please. Tonight's agenda, we'll start with the background. We'll then talk about the task force formation and membership, its purpose and provisions, and follow up with the discussion and any questions that council may have. Next slide, please. In July 2014, the Pacifica City Council adopted its first climate action plan. In recent years, the City Council has received requests from residents and environmental groups to update the city's climate action plan. In response, council adopted as goal number three of their fiscal year 2022, 2023, City Council priorities to complete an update to the climate action plan. On April 24th, council held a study session to gather information and public input, as well as provide direction to staff on how the next steps for updating the cap should be formulated with consideration to funding, resources, and staff involvement. Council directed staff to bring back recommendations on the size and structure of a task force that will be charged to work collaboratively to develop a draft update to the cap. Council indicated these recommendations should address task force, membership, purpose, terms, and general provisions. Council reaffirmed their commitment in the May 8th, 2023 adoption of the Pacifica Strategic Plan, which states its goal for to pursue climate change, adaptation, and mitigation, with an update to the city's climate action and adaptation plan being their top most, topmost strategy in that pursuit. Forming a community-based task force to develop and draft an update to Pacifica's cap is a method of involving the community in identifying the means and the measures the city can take to mitigate its impact on climate. This task force will be a council-appointed group, subject to the provisions of the Brown Act, and charged with drafting the city's cap for City Council consideration. Any potential strategies or measures identified by the task force will be informed by community input, scientific measures, staff expertise, and will ultimately require approval by the City Council. This task force will be supported by Elizabeth and I, along with the Civic Spark Fellow. The task force should be comprised of nine to 11 community members. The task force should be comprised of nine to 11 community members. This number of participants is large enough for numerous tasks to be assigned and worked on by members and would be a manageable size for the staff who support it. Representation. To draft an effective cap, it is important to engage with and consider the viewpoints of a diverse mix of stakeholders. Members of this task force should be selected to represent a broad cross section of the community, such as residents, businesses, youth, nonprofit organizations and residential and commercial property owners. City staff would not be members of the task force but will provide meeting support necessary for it to carry out assigned work. Staff would also engage on behalf of the task force with other city partners, such as governmental agencies and consultants as needed. The task force would be a council-appointed body. Qualified applicants would ideally have experience or be familiar with climate change and sustainability principles and strategies. The members would be selected through a written application and interview process.
Once appointed, staff proposed that the task force work should be guided by a purpose statement that outlines their mission. And we offer the following statement for council to consider. The task force's purpose shall be to develop a climate action plan, climate action and adaptation plan for adoption by city council that identifies measurable targets and specific actions the city can take to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in Pacifica on a timeline that gives consideration to funding and resources available to the city and that includes provisions to monitor the implementation of the cap as well as plan for its update at an interval deemed appropriate. Staff believe the task force's cap can be more readily implemented if the group makes use of some guiding principles to steer their work. The principles we propose include consideration for the need for quick, effective action, the available means and community values, which all carry weight in this task. We propose the cap should be representative of Pacifica's community values, that the cap should prioritize the three priority areas identified for local government action in CARB's 2022 scoping plan in addition to other community identified actions, that it should identify actions not yet addressed in other city plans and projects, that it should aim for targets that will have near to midterm effects in our community, and that the plan should identify the resources needed to carry out the plan. With their purpose and principles in mind, the task force would be charged with meeting cap development milestones within an 18 to 24-month timeframe. The task force would define the scope of the cap, analyze the city's greenhouse gas inventory and envelop an emissions forecast, establish measurable targets and actionable goals, formulate the strategies, initiatives and plan to implement those goals, draft the cap and present the cap to city council for adoption. As for the group's provisions, the task force would exist for a limited term to carry out the specific work that council directs it to. And it would exist until council adopts the cap or until council disbands or extends the task force. The member's term of participation would be for the duration of the task force's existence. As for meetings, the task force would meet at least monthly to ensure it reaches key project milestones and completion of the draft cap within the 18 to 24-month timeframe. And the task force would follow the general terms for City of Pacifica commissions and committees, including electing a chair and vice chair, holding meetings subject to the Brown Act and following the rules in the committee and commission handbook. Now that we've discussed the proposed formation, membership, purpose and provisions for the task force, we invite council's questions and comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. It's good to see you here and giving us a report. Thank you. Counsel, do we have any questions?
I just have one to, to start with. Can, can you explain a little bit about the roles of the task force versus the consultant? Like probably the greenhouse gas inventory would be done by someone else, for example. And, and then you mentioned develop emissions forecast. Like I wouldn't have any idea how to do that. So does the task force kind of define where, when they need help or, or are there steps that you all have already identified of specific work that a, a separate technical consultant would do as part of this?
There may be moments where both apply, but generally speaking, the, those technical actions can be taken by, through RICAPs, through their agreement with recon consultants who offer those services to our, the partner agencies for low to no cost.
And then you mentioned the three focus areas, but also that the, the task force has the discretion, you know, to add other things. I know when, when we discussed this the last time, we, we council put a few other things, you know, to consider on the list. Who, who makes the final decisions, I guess, on, on what, what will be tackled, knowing that, you know, you're looking for short-term impacts and so forth? Is that?
You do.
We do.
Counsel does.
So you'll be presenting things to us along the way? That's, that's what I wanted to ask.
Yeah, the task force will make updates to council and seek direction, much like staff do with different projects you've given us. Well, they'll provide updates and can do that if you need one in particular or just a key milestone. So it's up to you.
And councilmember Bowles, if I may add into there, we, we heard the council, you know, and the, and the task force will obviously be making recommendations beyond the three CARB-focused areas, air, air resources board-focused areas to add other areas in. But one of the important things we felt in calling out those three areas under CARB is those, those statewide are identified as some pretty high-progress areas where you can achieve a lot of credit or reductions and, and a lot of actions related to those. So those are important to focus on, but the task force, of course, can, can delve into other actions as well.
Counselmember Beer.
That was my question as well, because I know we had a robust discussion about that. So thank you for answering it.
Any other questions from council? If not, we'll move to public comment. I do have one card from Nancy Tierney. And if anyone else from the audience wishes to speak, please fill out a card at the back of the room and bring it up.
Good evening, council and staff. My name is Nancy Tierney. I'm a Pacifica resident, a member of the Pacifica Climate Committee and Sierra Club, Loma Prieta Chapter, Pacifica Hillside's and Coastal Protection Committee. I support the resolution to create a climate action and adaptation task force whose purpose is to develop a cap for adoption by city council. Among the guiding principles that you've heard are that the plan represents Pacifica's community values and priorities through community engagement, that the plan identifies targets and actions not currently addressed in other city plans, that is, that local conditions and engagement play a big role. So on behalf of Sierra Club, the local chapter, I recommend adding a reference to nature-based adaptation solutions to the draft purpose statement. It currently reads identifies measurable targets and specific actions the city can take to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in Pacifica. And rather, we would say identifies measurable targets and specific actions the city can take to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and implement nature-based adaptation solutions in Pacifica. The resolution cites, and so that's the end of our recommendation. The resolution cites the priorities for local government action in the California Air Resources Board 2022 scoping plan. I'd like to reiterate a point I made at the April 24th study session on the cap to consider how trees contribute to reducing greenhouse gas emissions, thus a strategy to preserve and to plant more trees in the city. Our updated tree ordinance will provide valuable guidance, as would establishing a tree canopy goal in the plan. We also can learn much from the experiences of other California cities in their recent cap updates in scope, ambition, timeframe and oversight. I look forward to engaging with city staff and the task force on this important endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other cards. Anyone on the phone?
We have one raised hand. It is Margot Maiman.
Margot, please state your name for the record. I'll let you know when you have a minute remaining.
Margot Maiman here. Thank you for pursuing this work. I'm very much in favor of city forming a citizen task force. I think the number of nine to 11 people is right. I think the timeframe of 18 to 24 months also seems right. I just want to mention something really quickly about the electrification workshop that was held last week. Thank you to the city for supporting that and sponsoring that. We put a limit of 80 registrants for that meeting and 80 people registered for that meeting. And so, you know, there's definitely community interest in taking action, individual action to mitigate climate change. So I know there's community interest in this. I do think that the focus on the three priority areas from the California Air Resources Board is, is a good, is a good initial guide. I'm pleased to hear that we're not limited to those three areas and that the task force can go beyond that. I do have some wonderings. I wonder about that 18 to 24-month timeframe that the task force would be a limited duration. I wonder if there's flexibility to continue the task force to monitor the city's progress after the, the cap is in place, assuming that maybe the task, the makeup of the task force might change. I also wonder about the possibility of training for task force members. I'm going to assume that many task force members will be new at this, at being on a task force. So I wonder if there's, you know, training involved about what it means to be on a task force. Will there be training for task force members around the Brown Act and what that means?
One minute.
Will be a clear delineation on the responsibilities of task force members versus responsibilities of staff members versus consultants, that sort of thing? So I just wonder, I guess, you know, when the task force gets going, what are the required educational components for task force members so that they are able to perform the task at the best of their abilities? Thank you very much for pursuing this and I appreciate you taking the time to have this on the agenda and moving this forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Margot.
We have an additional raised hand. It is a phone number ending in 3484.
3484, go ahead and press star six to unmute. State your full name for the record and I'll let you know when you have a minute remaining on the clock.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Big Stick and council members. This is Kimberly Williams and I'm speaking tonight as a local coast-side resident. I live in the unincorporated area next to Pacifica. And I would like to also support what Nancy Tierney said about adding language about nature-based adaptation solutions for, for Pacifica. And I think that's a really important point to make and I fully support that and I hope the council will as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no other raised hands.
Final call for anyone wishing to speak. Closing public comment and bringing it back to council for deliberation. I'll start by supporting the implementing nature-based adaptation solution nomenclature. I also wanted to follow up on a couple of Margot's questions. My understanding from the staff report is that it's very flexible in time in terms of duration, but perhaps staff could highlight that for a moment and talk for a moment about the kind of training that will go involved, will be involved for those who are joining up with the task force.
Regarding the duration, the recommendation before you is that this is a task force with a focused purpose in that it, as currently outlined and resolved in the resolution, would end at the time of adoption of the climate action plan. If the council wanted to make changes or form a new committee for a new purpose, that would be an action that would be, you know, undertaken and analyzed at that point in time moving forward. So I think the beginning and end related to this iteration of the task force is really focused on the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan.
And certainly if one of the recommendations of the task force down the road were that, to be that we have something ongoing or we could then take up that conversation and form the appropriate body accordingly?
Right. And so as we've talked about before, in terms of an ongoing commission related to sustainability or whatever it might be called, that's sort of a different body of analysis and consideration the council would need to undertake at that time. Regarding training, certainly all of our, it's be like any other committee, commission, there will be Brown Act training that would be highly recommended to participate in. So they're informed about Brown Act training and there'll be other trainings available. I don't have a specific answer to sort of conferences and that kind of thing that cost money. And then there's other, there's other obligations that, and responsibilities with appointed officials that go along with those, such as Form 700. And I'm looking to the city clerk or the city attorney if they are engaging in reimbursable activities, et cetera, that, that, that are invoked by that. But yeah, the intention would be definitely Brown Act training and other training regarding process and conduct of their work.
And having sat upon a task force once upon a time, I can speak from personal experience and that in the city definitely gives you the tools to enable the work you are there to do. Any other questions, comments? Councilmember Bowles.
I, I just want to say I, I also support looking at nature-based adaptation strategies. And, and I think the nine to 11 is a, is a good number of people, too. One thing that's, isn't mentioned is, is the possibility of a council liaison. And I, I understand city managers, Woodhouse, about the concern of a council member being in a position to, to direct the work of, of the group. And I just want to make sure that, you know, it's clear, if there is one of us serving them that way, that that's not the role. The role is really there to communicate back and forth. And I just wanted again, if we wanted to have a liaison, I would be delighted to serve as that role. But I, I'm not sure what our, our typical policy is on, on task forces and, and whether there's a liaison or not.
If we were to have a liaison, what's the appropriate time to have that discussion? Is it tonight or is it down the road?
It, it would be tonight.
It doesn't have to be tonight, but it can be.
Right. The city attorney clarified that it, it doesn't have to be tonight, but it, but it can be. What I would say about the liaison role is that it's certainly something council should discuss and the, the pros and cons of, of that is as councilmember Bowles said, you know, this is a, this is a working task force and the, and the presence of a council member does change the dynamic of a community working task force. And in, in addition, I'm, I'm sure there's a lot of the council members that if there were a liaison, might be interested in that role. But if the council ended up in deciding that there should be a liaison, then I would also ask that it, it really clarify what the purpose and role of the liaison would be. And those are some of the points to make about that.
Serving on a number of various committees and, or at least as liaison to various committees and commissions, it occurs to me that oftentimes there's a lot of work that those committees and commissions do that do not come back to council. Those committees and commissions serve roles other than just being advisory in nature and scope. And I appreciate that, given that this would be a task force specifically advisory in nature and scope, having the presence of a council member there might take away from them being focused on what ultimately they wish to present to all of us. Somehow the balance might be tipped a little bit, or at least the premise of that is introduced. Counselmember Beer.
I also support the.
I also support the nature-based strategies. I know we talked about that a lot, but I just wanted to reiterate to our community that that's really important to us, and it's really important to me. So thank you for suggesting the language, Nancy. I really appreciate that. As far as liaison goes, I think it's tricky for a task force to have a liaison because we really want it to be, this is community-led, and then the community can bring what they've created to us. And so, I think honoring that process for me is to allow them to do their thing and then bring it to us. But that's just my opinion.
And I was wondering if we had a council member attending, if we rotated through the council members, so we didn't have one person who was always putting in their opinion, maybe.
City Attorney to the microphone.
Unfortunately, that would not be allowed. That would be a Brown Act violation. Yes, or it could be.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm okay not. I'm offering if it's appropriate, so.
So thank you. And meanwhile, we have a small consensus around the nature-based adaptation solution nomenclature. Does?
I just want to get some clarity on what we're talking about, about that. Is that in reference to the trees when we were talking? Remember when the slides were first put up, and there were like three areas that were proposed, and then we were suggesting that there might be a place for tree canopy and such?
I don't think it's only about trees, but it includes trees. But there's a lot of other nature-based strategies than just trees.
Yeah. And again, it's up to the task force to determine what strategies. But I mean, just looking at Lindemar Beach and the sand dunes, for example, that were built up to prevent flooding, that's a great example of a nature-based solution.
I just want to be clear that this isn't going to, I'm looking at the focus in the items, but I have some concern about the areas that it says, should prioritize targets and actions that are not currently addressed in other city plans and projects. And so I'm wondering about the overlapping potential nature of this work with, for example, work that we're doing in the Beach Boulevard area. Is it envisioned that this would be somehow informing that work?
I don't think anything is defined. That's, again, up to the task force to see, you know, if they might have some opinions. I mean, these are very complicated subjects, which, you know, unless you're a coastal engineer or have, you know, that expertise, you're not going to necessarily know. And to factor in those kinds of things in an implementation plan that's short-term, you know, in a project that's only a year and a half or two years, I'm not sure how much is going to be able to get in there. But I think just having that as something that we aspire to see if there are some things that we can do, you know, is a good thing. And yes, it does not necessarily, it doesn't take away from the other project that we're doing at Beach.
I just want clarity about that, that's all. Because, I mean, often, nature-based adaptation strategies used in specific regard to coastal, addressing coastal issues. And so that seems like what we're talking about here when you mentioned the beach and the dunes and all that.
Yeah. And we know that there's a grant being applied, too, to look at those things a little bit more. I mean, like, perhaps in Rockaway, there's a floodplain or, you know, something that could be part of it.
Like drainage and some of those possibilities.
Exactly. It's water management and so forth.
Okay. That was my concern.
And I do like that you highlighted that we have in the document, should prioritize targets and actions that are not currently addressed in other city plans and projects, that that is, it looks like what we're passing tonight. I appreciate you underlying that.
And I like the fact that it indicates that it must be a broad cross-section of the community on this task force. I think that's really important. Not just experts in the fields. A lot of different people have different knowledge and opinion.
Are you comfortable with nature-based adaptation? To my mind, it has something to do with exploring all options and certainly those that are nature-based. And I think that if it's supported by this notion in our document, that it's looking at things that we are not currently looking at specifically. Okay.
And considering greenhouse gas emissions.
Right.
And considering greenhouse gas emissions.
Right. I mean, that's what I mean. So that's why I was a little confused about. It seems like GHD is the primary focus of this. I realize, though, we don't want it to be strictly limited to that. We heard public comment on that from a couple of people. But I don't want us to lose sight of that.
But that's how you get there, through the nature-based solutions. Like, you know, trees.
If I may, because there's a point in here that I'm perhaps a little confused about, so I want to make sure that staff is having clear direction as we finalize this and this process moves forward. So the focus in the purpose statement is actions to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And then there are, like, trees, a nature-based solution related to that goal. And so, is the intent, or should we clarify and make the intent that in adding the wording, and I do want to clarify what wording we're actually adding regarding nature-based solutions, but is it nature-based solutions that help to achieve the greenhouse gas reduction goals, or is it within that context? Because there are, you know, other nature-based solutions that don't necessarily relate to reduction of GHD.
That was my understanding, is that we're looking at nature-based solutions that address greenhouse gas emissions, yes?
Well, I just, yes and no. I mean, it's a climate action and adaptation plan, right? And so, some of that adaptation, and that's, this is, I mean, I've never read a climate action and adaptation plan, so I'm not quite sure, you know, what different things might be considered under the adaptation part. But, for example, you know, flooding isn't just the coast, it's also, you know, we have a lot more rain, and, you know, maybe some of the areas, you know, we can think about bioswales and things like that, that, you know, that are adapting to a changing climate, increased fire and nature-based solutions to, you know, not just planting more trees, but trimming trees and keeping things away. I mean, it's more broad than I think we're, we tend to go to the sea level rise issues, but it's really a lot more than that.
Yeah, but for the scope of this work, it seems like the scope of this work is fairly centric around greenhouse gas emissions. And so, as we're contemplating all possible solutions, I'm happy adding a nomenclature about nature-based solutions. I just want to make sure that it gives the scope something that our task force can clearly work on, as opposed to going too far off the rails in areas where the scope becomes unclear.
Mayor Big Stick, may I make a comment?
Please.
In the context of adaptation for climate action plans, one thing I came to learn is that adaptation can be offsetting carbon emissions. And if council wanted to, they could perhaps add another word other than reduce greenhouse gas emissions, maybe reduce and offset. And that would include some of these nature-based solutions as ideas, but also keep it narrowly focused to, as it relates to greenhouse gas emissions, and maybe not some other adaptation things that would be handled in other city projects and realms much broader than the climate action plan, if that helps.
Thank you.
Yeah, I like that, reduce and offset, yeah.
I welcome any other deliberation. I think we've got some consensus around that issue.
Mayor, if I could make a suggestion, just from what I'm observing and hearing, what the council needs to look at is Exhibit A to the resolution, to see if there is anything that needs to be amended in that task, in that exhibit, which, in my interpretation, is fairly broad and can incorporate actually everything that the council is suggesting here today, because the ultimate goal is to produce the cap, which is very broad. So what the direction that I hear from council is that you are giving direction now to your task force, should it be created, but the direction that you're giving isn't, doesn't necessarily conflict with the resolution and the purpose and the goal that is, you know, directed in Exhibit A, that is set forth in Exhibit A. And if you believe that you would like more clarification in Exhibit A, then let's focus on Exhibit A and what you would like to include or delete.
So, oh, sorry. I'm looking at packet page 126, the, I guess, second paragraph, the italicized paragraph under the purpose. And then I'm comparing that with what the third whereas of the resolution is saying. And in light of the comments about nature-based adaptations and, what was that thing you just said, Elizabeth?
Offset.
Offsetting. What language exactly do we need to amend in?
Exhibit A.
In Exhibit A?
Because the staff report is illustrative of what is in Exhibit A. If the council adopts the resolution, you're adopting the resolution in Exhibit A. You're not necessarily adopting the staff report. So if you want language from the staff report that is not included in Exhibit A, then we need to put it into Exhibit A. Or if you're just clarifying what you believe is already included in Exhibit A, you can just note that for the record, it will be in the minutes, and the minutes will be given to this task force members when they are first created, so that they know what, you know, more verbiage. All of your direction to the task force does not have to be in Exhibit A.
I'm pretty happy with the resolution. If we wanted to add anything, maybe under item three, establish measurable targets and actionable goals to reduce and offset emissions. But I think it's broad, it's pretty broad as it's written, that gives a lot of discretion to the task force. So I'm also okay with it, as it is.
I like it being broad.
Okay.
Ultimately, that gives discretion to the task force to do with it what they wish before bringing it back to us. And, you know, as we are already largely supportive of whatever nature-based adaptation solutions entails, which presumably we'd specifically find out on the other side, it seems as though there's nothing to stop the task force from pursuing that. Any further discussion? Would someone like to make a motion?
I move that we adopt the attached resolution of the city council creating the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan Task Force.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, please vote.
Item number seven passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Well done. This brings us to item number eight, a resolution of intention to continue the Business Improvement District Program and levy the annual assessments for fiscal year 2023, 2024. Proposed action, adopt the resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Pacifica Confirming the Annual Report of the Advisory Board of the Pacifica Hotels and Business Improvement District Bid and Declaring the City Council's Intention to Continue the Bid Program and Levy the Annual Assessments for the Fiscal Year 2023, 2024 at the Same Rate as Levied in the Fiscal Year 2022, 2023 Without Change and Set the Date of June 12, 2023 for the Public Hearing on the Annual Levy of Assessments on Hotels Within the Bid." Staff report, please.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, the item before you tonight is a resolution of intent to continue the Business Improvement District Program and levy the assessment for the fiscal year 2023, 2024. As you know, we have two parallel processes this year in regards to BID program. At the last meeting on May 8, you adopted the resolution of intent to amend the Pacifica Municipal Code to transition the managing agency role of the BID to the city. And today, we are bringing forward a resolution of intent to continue annual assessment. As the mayor just read, it's at the same rate, $1 per night per room, which is, again, this is our normal annual assessment that we do every year, and this is what is on the agenda before you tonight. So if you approve this resolution that you have in your packets, the public hearing date will be set for June 12 to allow BID assessment to continue into the new fiscal year without interruption. And this process also includes the city reviewing and accepting the BID annual report. The report was submitted by the Chamber of Commerce on May 15, and also included in your packets. Unfortunately, we don't have chamber representatives in the audience today unless they participated via Zoom. But either way, so the city, I mean, the staff recommends that the council adopt the resolution of intent and set the June 12 date for the public hearing for the annual levy of assessment on hotels within BID district. That concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Yulia. Do we have questions? If not, we'll bring it.
Go on.
Did you have a question?
Since the city's going to take this over, the payment to the chamber for what the chamber does presumably will go away. Is that correct?
The assessment will not be remitted to the Chamber of the Commerce once the process is complete.
Okay. So their portion, that they've been paid as the visitor center, et cetera, will be gone. Is that correct?
Well, the BID has not provided any direction on how they want to use the BID's funds yet. So the direction that, or intent of the BID was to safeguard these funds, and then the BID will resume the conversation on how they want to spend the funds moving forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? And we'll go to public comment. I have no cards from the audience. Does anyone wish to speak? Seeing no one, Emily, is there anyone on the line? I'll give it another minute, moment, not minute. If no one wishes to speak, we'll close public comment, bring it back to council for deliberation. Council? Or a motion?
Discussion?
Or a motion?
Or a motion. I would like to make a motion. Do I have to read the whole thing? Do I need to read the recommended action?
No, you can just say, adopt the resolution as specified in the staff report.
I would, I move that we adopt the resolution as specified in the staff report.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion before we vote? Please vote.
And item number eight passes unanimously.
That brings us to item number nine, appointments to the Beautification Advisory Committee, Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission. Yulia, thank you very much. Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee and Measure Y Citizens Oversight Committee, we're appointing one partial term to beautification, two full four-year terms to PBNR, two full four-year terms to OSPAC, and two two-year terms that expire in '25 to Measure Y, and up to three, four-year terms that would expire in 2027 to Measure Y. Staff report, please.
Mayor and council members, the city recruited applicants for expiring terms on a couple of committees and commissions, and a vacancy on one of the committees. of committees and commissions and a vacancy on one of the committees, as well as applicants for the new Measure Y Citizens Oversight Committee. The positions recruited for include, as the mayor stated, one position on the Beautification Advisory Committee for one partial term to expire March 2026, two full position, full-term positions on the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission for four-year terms to expire May 2027, and two full four-year term positions for Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee to expire May 2027, as well as positions on the newly-formed Measure Y Citizens Oversight Committee for two position, for a total of three to five positions. The first two positions filled would be for a term, a two-year term to expire May 2025, and the remaining terms appointed would be for full four-year terms to expire May 2027. The city recruited with notices on, at the community center, on the city's website, published in the Pacifica Tribune, and on the city's Connect with Pacifica e-newsletter. The city received two applicants for the Beautification Advisory Committee, three applicants for the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission, and I was informed by one of the three applicants, Nancy Salsito, that she has withdrawn her application for, I'm sorry. The Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission. The city received two applications for the Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee, and the city received four applications for the Measure Y Citizens Oversight Committee. Interviews were held by, at a special city council meeting on May 16th, 2023, with the applicants for those positions. And at this time, I invite the council members to discuss and deliberate nominations for each of the selections on the four committees. And with, at the culmination of the deliberations, to nominate and appoint unnamed applicant for each of the positions, clearly stating if there are several positions open, which should be appointed to the partial or short, short term, and which to be appointed to the full terms.
Thank you very much, City Clerk. Before we get to deliberation, let's do questions and then public comment. Council, have you any questions at this juncture? Public comment, I have no cards. Anyone online? Last call. Closing public comment and bringing it back to council for deliberation. Shall we start with the Beautification Advisory Committee? Councilmember Beckmeyer.
I would like to propose that we appoint Sue Markovic-Garza to the partial term to expire March 2026.
Does anyone wish to discuss, or would you like to merely make a motion?
Do I second it, or, or like?
Why don't you formally?
That wasn't really a motion.
Make a motion.
I move that we appoint Sue Markovic-Garza to the partial seat on the Beautification Advisory Committee expiring March 2026.
I'll second that.
So, before we vote, deliberation.
You missed her, Mary. She interviewed the previous time when, when you were not able to come.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
She, Sue Snazana interviewed with us the previous time, and she was not chosen, and so we encouraged her to apply again. So, she applied, but she was not able to make the interviews the last time, so you, you've not met her in person.
Personally, I tend not to vote for someone who hasn't interviewed, but since I did see her the last time around, I'm comfortable voting for her this round.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not, because I'm, I've never, yeah, wasn't there, so I didn't see her interview, but that's okay.
You also have the options to, you can vote no, but you could also abstain if you wanted to abstain from the vote, I think, City Attorney? Yeah?
Okay. I'll do that. I think I'm going to do that.
Do we need to do a roll call for doing an abstention, or? No? Okay.
Thank you.
So, Mary has stated why she's abstaining. The rest of us, please vote.
Need one more vote for four votes.
So, Mary's abstaining from?
I'm abstaining.
Yes, I have three, three lights currently.
Not doing it, neither.
And to appoint Sue Markovic-Garza to the Beautification Advisory Committee, moved by Beckmeyer, seconded by Bowles, I have a vote of four to zero with abstention by Beer.
And for clarity, because I'm not sure if City Attorney heard the reason, it was because she wasn't there to hear the interview for the candidate.
There doesn't need to be a reason for abstention.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure if, okay.
Great.
Cool. And once again, we said this at the interview meeting, but Ryan, if you're out there, we encourage you to reapply. These positions come up fairly regularly. Mayor Protem?
I just wanted to make a motion to appoint Parks, Beaches and Recreation, Gail Schumacher, Shoemaker, and Mark Torres.
I'll second.
We have a vote in a second. If there's no discussion, please vote.
That vote passes five to zero.
Sarah, I'm not sure if you reset the board before we voted.
Okay, let, let's try that again.
Let's vote again, please.
And the motion to appoint Gail Shoemaker and Mark Torres, made by Sue Vaterlos and seconded by Councilmember Beer, passes unanimously.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee for the two full four-year terms, Ellen Nastase, oh, Nathan, sorry, Ellen, and Erin Reed.
Second.
We have a vote in a second. Please vote. We have a motion in a second. That's the second time I've done, please vote.
We just know that.
And the motion made by Councilmember Beer and seconded by Mayor Protem Vaterlos to appoint Ellen Nadasan and Erin Reed to the Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee passes unanimously.
I'm going to take the liberty on this one and move that we appoint Marge Davis for the four-year term and Joe Hurley for the other four-year term, and appoint Dave Griesbach and Nicholas Human for the two-year partial terms.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please vote.
And for the Measure Y Citizens Oversight Committee, motion by Mayor Big Stick, seconded by Mayor Protem Vaterlos, for Marge Davis for your term, Joe Hurley for your term, Dave Griesbach two-year term, and Nicholas Human two-year term. That passes unanimously.
There is no further business. Meeting adjourned.